Seeing that we have a quorum, I'll call to order this Common Counsel Special Session for the Introduction to Ordinance 1924, which repeals and reenacts the text of the Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, and other matters of the Council of October 16th, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rallo?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here is tonight's agenda summation. If you'd like an agenda, you may find it on the Clerk's desk. We will have reports this evening. We have one report, which is the 2018 Greenhouse Gas Inventory Report, which will be presented by Mayor Hamilton. It'll be presented by Alex Crowley. And then we will visit council schedule. Then we will introduce Ordinance 1924 to repeal and replace Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Unified Development Ordinance. We will anticipate a motion on conduct of deliberations. And then we will have an introduction to the proposed Unified Development Ordinance, which is Chapter 1, The Ordinance Foundation, and Chapter 2, Zoning Districts. Then we will debate other matters or actions related to this proposal, ready to be raised at this meeting, before we recess until October 22nd, correct? Mr. Sherman? So that's tonight's agenda summation. Let's go to reports. Mr. Crowley?
Good evening. I'm Alex Crowley, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. It's my pleasure to introduce the results of Bloomington's 2018 Greenhouse Gas Inventory Report. I'll make some summary remarks, and then Lauren Travis, our Assistant Director for Sustainability for the City, will share top-line data from the report. The full report is available on the City of Bloomington's Sustainability page. As you may know, we released the report yesterday and held a well-attended session with members of the public here at City Hall yesterday evening. There was a good and lively discussion, which we appreciated. Before I start with these same comments that I made last night, I'd like to recognize a significant contribution to the report by Savannah Rodriguez, second-year O'Neill Fellow Student, who did much of the heavy lifting on the data in our department this summer. I'd also like to recognize the IU Environmental Resilience Institute and the McKinney Family Foundation for the invaluable support they provided Bloomington and other Indiana communities in developing our respective greenhouse gas inventories. Many thanks also to Duke Energy, to Vectren, and city staff for their support during data collection.
Excuse me, is there a way to project on those screens in addition?
Sure. I'm not actually using slides, so we have a little time to kill. So let me begin by focusing our attention on the severity of our climate emergency. As you know, the effects of the changing climate are already evident here at home with significant rainfalls -- and loss of mics -- with significant rainfalls and rising temperatures, which are projected to worsen in the years to come. The effects are also evident regionally, nationally, and globally. This is not some distant and abstract issue for us. According to Purdue University's Climate Impacts Assessment, and I quote, "Indiana's climate will warm dramatically in the coming decades, particularly in the summer. Both the number of hot days and the hottest temperatures of the year are projected to increase markedly. Indiana's winters and springs are projected to become considerably wetter, and the frequency of extreme precipitation events are expected to increase." End quote. According to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, or IPCC, the impacts of climate change are starting to become devastating, and if left unchecked, climate change will threaten our very existence on this planet. A temperature increase of 1.5 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels will accelerate a series of cataclysmic effects, including species loss, heat waves, rising sea levels, flooding, and increases in ocean acidity. This is not hyperbole; this is science. And despite assertions to the contrary from certain corners of our federal and state governments, assertions that are frankly astounding in their shortsightedness, we humans are causing the problem. Which is why it's so important for communities like ours to measure greenhouse gas emissions accurately and to develop and implement plans to minimize emissions with the highest possible urgency. It was with this urgency in mind that the City of Bloomington undertook and completed its 2018 Sustainability Action Plan, which was adopted by City Council last October. This five-year plan, the first of its kind undertaken by our community and the result of hundreds of hours of community input, lays out specific steps the city, government, and the community can take to continue to shift our trajectory toward greater sustainability. The Sustainability Action Plan addresses a number of focus areas, including climate change and adaptation, energy and the built environment, transportation, local food and agriculture, waste, water, ecosystem health, and city operations. While greenhouse gas emissions can be tied to many of these areas of focus, the Climate Change and Adaptation Chapters specifically addresses the need to accurately account for and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, establishing a consistent methodology for measuring and reporting emissions is the first action item in the Sustainability Action Plan, Action Item 1.1A. This action supports a goal of reducing community greenhouse gas emissions by 11% by 2023 relative to a baseline of 1.3 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions in 2016 to meet the city's declared climate commitments. So how does the 11% reduction between 2016 and 2023 compare to the overall goal of the Paris Agreement, to which the mayor committed our community as part of the Climate Mayor's Commitment? The 11% reduction was calculated based on the results of the city's 2016 greenhouse gas inventory versus a previously undertaken inventory using 2006 data. Unfortunately, both the 2006 and the 2016 inventories did not benefit from the same rigor, standardization, and third-party auditing applied to this, the 2018 greenhouse gas inventory, which we just released. Thus, the 11% reduction was the best estimate available at the time. Which is why our next step, following yesterday's release of the report, will be to retroactively complete a historical inventory using the same updated and standardized methodology used in this report. We'll likely use 2011 data, unless we can accurately go back to 2005. By doing so, we'll establish our actual trajectory of emissions using a consistent, globally-accepted method for cities to calculate and report emissions, which is aligned with the Local Governments for Sustainability, or ICLEI, standard. So while it's tempting to try to compare our current emissions to previous reporting, and as noted in the report, some data can actually be compared, it is our recommendation that we complete a full review of the best historical data available before we definitively assess our current performance against Bloomington's commitment, which is reducing greenhouse gas emissions by at least 26% to 28% below 2005 levels by 2025. We'll undertake and complete the historical review as quickly as possible, and then we'll publish that information as soon as it's available. At the same time, we are undertaking a climate vulnerability assessment to be completed in 2020, to provide a detailed review of the anticipated climate-related risks to people, infrastructure, and natural resources in Bloomington and Monroe County. This is an important effort, especially because we recognize that climate change disproportionately affects individuals who are already vulnerable and least able to respond to and adapt to climate hazards, such as flooding and severe heat. Let me conclude by saying, we recognize that the challenge before us is huge, and it will take our entire community working together to respond to it. The Sustainability Action Plan lays out an aggressive set of actions we can and will continue to pursue in collaboration with the community to help address the global and local climate emergency. Accurate reporting is imperative in understanding our progress, but actions to reduce emissions are of the utmost priority, and we will continue to pursue those with the highest sense of urgency. We look forward to your feedback on the 2018 greenhouse gas inventory, including what we can do to strengthen the report for the future, and ongoing dialogue with City Council and the community as we all do our part to confront climate change here at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. My name is Lauren Travis, and I serve as the Assistant Director of Sustainability for the City of Bloomington. I will be presenting the results of our inventory. As Alex mentioned, conducting the greenhouse gas inventory is a 2019 Sustainability Action Plan goal. The goal was to establish a consistent methodology for measuring and reporting greenhouse gas emissions, and is now complete with the publication of this report. Integration of this action during the Sustainability Action Plan planning process was based on community feedback that it was important to establish a common language around emissions, a direct and consistent way to estimate the total amount of community greenhouse gas emissions, and a way to use metrics to help the community see the accomplishments and direction that the city is taking with respect to sustainability and climate action. This is also an opportunity to communicate the impacts of climate change and make it translatable to residents so that they understand their impact and the importance of climate action. Cities, including Bloomington, are a significant and growing source of energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. A city's ability to take effective action on mitigating climate change and monitoring progress depends on having access to good-quality data on emissions. Planning for climate action begins with developing an inventory. An inventory enables citizens and cities to understand the emissions contribution of different activities in their community. Bloomington followed the Global Protocol for Community-Scale Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory, and that provides us with an estimate of our impact for all emissions generating activities attributable to Bloomington. Following this protocol for counting Bloomington's emissions means that our quantification method is consistent with how other cities also report their emissions. As Alex alluded to, there will be significant climate impacts, not only globally, but here in Bloomington and Monroe County. The Midwest should anticipate increased precipitation, flood risks, increased intensity and frequency of extreme hot days and heat waves, increased insect pests and invasive species presence, and increased vector-borne illness and airborne illness. Many of the impacts are interconnected, and impacts in one sector often result in impacts in other sectors. Based on modeling, Monroe County can expect 50 days of over 95 degrees, when the historical average has been 2; an average hottest day of the year of 107 degrees, when the average hottest day has been 97; and an average coldest day of the year of 1 degree. We can also expect impacts to ecosystem health, local food and agriculture, public health, waste management, energy, transportation and infrastructure, and water management. To learn more about the full climate impacts, please read the report. So, we conducted this inventory as part of the resilience cohort, which provided support from IU for 14 Indiana communities with training, technical resources, a peer network, and that gave us the ability to complete the inventory at a community scale. Some of the other cities that participated were Carmel, Columbus, Muncie, Evansville, Fishers, Fort Wayne, Gary, Greencastle, Goshen, Michigan City, Oldenburg, Richmond, and West During the course of this inventory, we measured the following sectors: stationary energy, transportation, solid waste, water and wastewater. So that includes combustion of fuel in government, residential, commercial, and industrial buildings, all energy related to transportation, so all journeys via road, air, water, and rail, and waste disposal and treatment procedures. So as you can see in this diagram, there's some direct impacts that come from transportation and waste and energy, and then also anything happening outside city limits that's attributable to activities within, as well as stationary energy, which is grid-supplied. The calculations are pretty complicated, but basically it comes down to any activity happening in city limits being multiplied by an emissions factor, which we can then translate into the amount of carbon dioxide equivalent that is released to the atmosphere as a result of activities occurring in Bloomington city limits. And the results indicate that the majority of our impact comes from stationary energy, from electricity or natural gas consumption. That results for about 75% of our impact, with the next largest coming from transportation at 27.3%, with solid waste accounting for 8%. So our total emissions for the community were about 1.6 million total carbon dioxide equivalency in metric tons, which amounts to 19.3 per capita. Then we also looked at the emissions attributable to local government operations. So that looks a little bit different. About 60% of our impact comes from treating and moving water and wastewater throughout our community. There's about 14% that's attributable to buildings, and then most of the majority comes from our fleet. So what does that data mean? Basically, we can also translate it on a per capita basis and look at other cities that have followed the same protocol. So the U.S. average is to the left of Bloomington, which is in yellow. We emitted 19.3 metric tons. I think it's important to note that local context matters. A city's energy mix, its population, its development patterns, its density and its size also contribute to emissions per capita. But just as a point of reference, that's where we stand in relation to other cities that have reported. Also, we can look at the data in a state context. We know that Indiana is the ninth-most energy-intensive state in the country. So that graph shows a million of metric tons of carbon dioxide emitted by every state in 2016. That means that for every Indiana resident, about 27.4 metric tons of CO2 emissions are generated just due to electricity. And then also on the left is a pie chart showing our Duke Energy mix. Basically, about 60% of energy produced by Duke Energy, who's our electricity provider, is coal-based, and then the remainder is natural gas, with wind, solar, and hydro representing a pretty insignificant portion of their portfolio. Another way to look at it is trends in the activities that are generating the emissions. We know between 2011 and 2018, we've had about a 7% decrease in stationary electricity consumption, so a pretty marked improvement in that. But we've also, at the same time, had an increase in the number of miles traveled per person on city streets, and a slight increase in the tons of municipal wastelandfill. So that is just a measure of activity resulting in greenhouse gas emissions, and another way to kind of visualize the information. As Alex mentioned, we have conducted inventories in the past. If you're interested in the degree to which those are comparable, you can read more in the report. But this is the most comprehensive inventory we've done so far. It measures more things, including looking at water and wastewater, which was not measured in the 2016 report. It's the only one that's followed the Global Protocol completely. We've had limited access in the past to the platform for calculations, and before 2014, there was no way for cities to calculate and report their emissions in a consistent way. So it's quite common to have inventories that have been improving over time in terms of their consistency. So this is not the only thing that we're doing in regards to climate mitigation and adaptation. The first action was to complete this inventory to calculate our impact and present it to the public. We're also looking at past goals that have been set, including the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, Global Covenant for Mayors, and then our Sustainability Action Plan Climate Change Chapter. We have ongoing initiatives that also contribute to emissions reduction that will be going on in 2020. And then, as part of our commitment, we'll continue to report via the same methodology in 2021, with other progress reported on a yearly basis, including a progress report for our Sustainability Action Plan and a sustainability dashboard, which will be ongoing, that will show some of that activity data and trends. As a follow-on for this, we're also going to be applying for the next round of the resilience cohort, which is another program out of IU Environmental Resilience Institute, to get support for prioritizing actions in regards to emissions reduction. And then, as Alex mentioned, we are conducting a climate vulnerability assessment, another Sustainability Action Plan goal, to provide a review of how we can expect climate to affect people, infrastructure, and natural resources in Bloomington and Monroe County. And then the full report can be found at bloomington.in.gov/sustainability under 2018 Bloomington Greenhouse Gas Inventory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Are there questions from council? I don't see any questions. I have one quick question. Does the methodology -- I've always wondered about this, because if we're going to grapple with the entire carbon footprint of the community, it should include goods that are imported. And certain goods have more carbon intensity, obviously, than others, ones that contain metals and things from mining. Is that addressed in this calculation?
No. Basically, we can only include data for which we have consistent reporting, so right now we don't have that on a local scale. So there's a lot of things that are emissions generating that aren't included in the scope of this inquiry. Other people have asked about boating, or leaf blowers, or other things. But basically, we included the data for which that is commonly included in those categories, so energy, transportation, and waste being the largest contributors to our impact.
Sure. Okay. I'm wondering, then, how to grapple with if one of our aims is local agriculture. So we're going to offset transportation of shipping iceberg lettuce from California, which is pretty significant, considering the calories you get out of an iceberg lettuce. But if we grow it locally, then we obviate that, right? We remove that carbon. So somehow, we're going to have to grapple with just some thumbnail regarding consumption, average consumption of an American consumer or something, to be able to, it seems to me, to be able to make sense of the gains that we do in terms of increasing local agriculture, for instance.
So there is an agriculture category of the protocol. Right now, we're not generating enough food to have reported in that category. So if we were to increase, we would then show our impact within that agriculture category. So I'm not sure that it would specifically look at the reduction based on food imports, but we do have some of that data that our local food coordinator has collected in terms of our local food economy, and what the impact would be of production here in Monroe County.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We have another question from Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I don't have a question. May I make a comment?
Oh, please, yes.
I have not had time to read this, so my questions will have to be deferred to later. But I just wanted to thank you very much, thank the administration and everybody involved in writing this report. I think this is an essential first step to tracking what will hopefully be our soon-future progress. So I really appreciate the report, and I'll be reading it in more detail soon.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Volin, did you have a question?
Yes, thanks for the report. I guess my question has been sort of an existential one for a while. Is there any thought about, you know, the carrying capacity of the community? Like, there's a certain -- how many people can we handle in this area? I mean, does the report sort of contemplate thinking about that long-term limit? Is there a goal that we're shooting for?
Well, I think that if you look at other communities, there's ways to grow that don't necessarily result in increasing impact on carbon. So if you look at New York City, for instance, they have one of the highest overall impacts, but per capita, it's lower than many other communities. And it's really based on how resources are flowing through your community, and the more efficiently that happens, then your impact is reduced. So if we are realizing our impact and managing our resources efficiently, then growth doesn't need to necessitate an increase in emissions.
I know that ROI did sort of a regional thing, but it's sometimes hard to distinguish between the city limits and the immediate surroundings. When we do per capita measurements, is it a futile effort to sort of read anything useful in that data?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think also you can look at the report and the fact that those Scope 3 emissions really looked at the impact of activities that are happening outside of the community that relate to inside. So while it's the scope of this particular report is city limits, because that's our administrative boundaries, it would be a useful exercise to partner with the county to look at what are our entire county's impacts, and to what degree we can improve as a larger body.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Travis. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Looking forward to reading the report. We will now move on to council schedule. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, there's a meeting scheduled this Friday. It's the council work session. Two items that could be brought to your attention. One is PUD on Moore's Pike. The other is establishing a near west side conservation district. These have -- both of these could come for introduction on October 30th. So please let me know if you want this meeting held or canceled.
Is there -- can we have a show of hands? Who would like to attend the meeting? Three of us, so let's proceed with that.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll have more. Anything else to consider? Mr. Sherman?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to Ordinance 1924. I understand we've already introduced this, and so this is Ordinance 1924 to repeal and replace Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Unified Development Ordinance. And I think we'll proceed if someone would like to offer a motion on conduct of deliberations.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to propose a motion to shape debate and discussion of the ordinance. In the introductory phase, where we go chapter by chapter reviewing the UDO, during its initial review, we'll discuss each chapter in order and in accordance with the proposed schedule for common council consideration of Ordinance 1924, which is a separate document. It is subject to revision as necessary. The order of business for each chapter would be as follows: a presentation by staff of 20 minutes, a period of common council questions, to be 30 minutes total, with three minutes per council member per opportunity to speak, public input of one three-minute statement per speaker, with no limit on the period, an additional council question period of no more than 20 minutes, with, again, three minutes per council member per opportunity to speak, and then finally, common council debate of four minutes per member, maximum of 36 minutes in total, with two opportunities to speak in that four minutes. As far as amendments go, members of the public may raise potential amendments during the public comment portion of the public meetings, and also by direct contact with council members outside of public meetings. This is as per our normal procedure. However, in accordance with normal council practice, again, part of regular procedure, only council members may sponsor and initiate amendments. Members will submit amendments to the council staff as soon as feasible. The primary deadline for amendments is Monday, November 4th at noon. This deadline is intended to apply for all but minor or technical amendments of narrow scope. A second deadline for these latter amendments is set for November 25th at noon. Council consideration of first-round amendments would occur in November, but may extend into December. Council consideration of second-round amendments will be taken up in December. In order to accommodate the schedule, the public is advised to communicate with council members well in advance of those dates. The public will have an opportunity to file written objections to the UDO with the city clerk and county auditor. The common council will consider these written objections as a separate item on the agenda at the meeting scheduled for October 30th, and prior to a vote. at the meeting scheduled for October 30th, and prior to a vote on adoption scheduled for December 18th. Other opportunities for consideration of written objections may be announced and added to the schedule. Amendments will be heard over a course of meetings in November, and if necessary, December, as listed on the schedule on a separate document. The order for amendments will appear on the agenda, and except where acted upon via a consent agenda, will be subject to a majority vote of the council. After the council has voted on all amendments and considered any new written objections, it will vote on the entire ordinance as amended. Except for those amendments that appear on the consent agenda, each amendment will be heard in the following manner. The sponsor will have 10 minutes to present. Planning and transportation staff will have five minutes to respond. The common council questions for the amendment will be no more than 30 minutes, with no more than three minutes per council member per opportunity to speak. Public input will be one three-minute statement per speaker with no limit. Additional council questions will be three minutes per member per opportunity to speak, with a limit of 10 minutes total. And then common council debate will be a maximum of four minutes per member, two minutes each of two bites of the apple, maximum of 36 minutes total, looking for a second.
Very good. Thank you for that motion for procedure. And a second, Mr. Sherman, is this debatable?
Oh, there's more. I missed, there's a page two.
Okay, to be continued.
Can I add to the motion, please? As far as recess, revision of procedures, and other matters, council deliberations on this ordinance will occur over a series of meetings in what will be one continuous hearing. As such, until these deliberations come to a close, the council will recess and not adjourn at the end of each meeting. As previously adopted by the council, the meetings will start at 6:00 PM, unless otherwise stated in the schedule, again, separate document, or as changed by a vote of the council. The council may at any time vote to recess until the next scheduled meeting, or until another date and time agreed upon by the council. However, each meeting shall not last longer than four hours, unless approved by two-thirds vote of the council. These procedures will be followed unless changed by action of the common council. Such action requires no more than a majority of the council. Additional procedures may be adopted by the council, that may include, but are not limited to, time limits for council debate and questions, and the hour and manner for recessing these meetings. That concludes the motion.
Can I still say?
Thank you.
Thank you. Debatable, yes. Any questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to note that in both Item 2 and Item 7, the sections called Additional Council Questions, this means, so we have in the Part 2 for review of the chapters, three minutes per council member, but a total of 20 minutes. So that means somebody's not going to get three minutes. So it's first comes, first served. Is that the idea? And then, again, on Item 7, when we discuss the amendments for additional council questions, it says three minutes per council member per round, 10 minutes total. That's nowhere near three times nine people, which is 27 minutes. So I'm just wondering what the thought process is there.
Thank you, Ms. Volin.
Well, I mean, I didn't necessarily change that, that limit, but we should note that not every member has an obligation to ask questions, and not every member will ask questions. So this is, again, where the two-thirds vote, which can be done as a voice vote, can be invoked to extend deliberation at any point in this process. We're going to find that some chapters, some amendments are more interesting than others, and I would politely, like, ask my colleagues to, you know, to roll with a little bit, to extend people an opportunity to speak at some points, and, you know, to extend the debate. And, you know, there will be others that there's not, just not as much. So let's play it by ear.
Does that satisfy your question?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Councilmember Sturbohn, and then?
Just a follow-up. So those discrepancies in time were intentional?
I did not, I mean, I did not author the entirety of this document. I did not recommend, for example, 10 minutes total for additional questions, but there are 30 minutes for questions in the first period. I am the maker of the motion, but I'm happy to amend any part of it if a member would like. What would you prefer? Keep in mind, again, these are the upper limits for, and they're not hard and fast limits, they are just our convention for the purpose of handling this ordinance. And we can always extend an additional council question period beyond 10 minutes, as long as someone says, "I move that we extend a period by another 10 minutes."
But we'd have to stop and have a two-thirds vote to extend that 10-minute period, and it could be after just a third question.
That's true. But that's a second period for questions, I might point out, so.
Councilmember Granger has a question. May I?
Thank you. My question is, could we also submit questions in writing to, to staff?
Absolutely. That's what we do with the budget. That's always been possible. I think that perhaps, considering a document of this volume, it would be prudent of us to think about what questions we feel we have to ask publicly, which versus ones that could be asked in writing outside of a meeting where everyone's time is concentrated in this space.
Further questions or comments?
May I?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I suggest we change in both Item 2 and in Item 7, the additional council questions to two minutes per council member, so that we're a little bit closer to the overall time limit.
Needs a second.
Second.
Discussion on that amendment, to the amendment?
Would you be open to adding a little time to that short period of time?
Point of order.
In Item 7, you mean?
The two items, you shortened the comment period instead of lengthening the total time. I wondered if you wanted to, would be open to doing both a little bit?
Councilmember Volin?
So Councilmember Piedmont Smith wants to shorten the period when somebody has the floor from three minutes to two. Councilmember Sturbohn wants to extend the period for additional questions during amendments from 10 minutes to 20. I think maybe we should just, for both periods, additional questions would be two minutes per member, 20 minutes total, and two minutes per member, 20 minutes total for amendments as well. Does that sound like a plan?
I would agree to that.
Councilmember Sturbohn?
Yes.
Satisfactory?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to amend?
Items 2 and 7, to read additional council questions, two minutes per member, 20 minutes total, in both cases.
Very good. Let's have a roll call vote. Clerk Bolden, will you call the roll?
Just for clarification, was that one motion, or was that two separate ones?
I think I amended Councilmember Piedmont Smith's motion.
Okay, thank you.
So are we voting on the amendment to the motion on the table?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
And then we'll visit the motion.
I think a voice vote is fine.
All right, then we will do it by voice vote.
So we're voting on the Councilmember Bolden's amendment to the proposed?
Yes, I guess so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's accepted. Now we'll go back to the original motion.
I think we can do that by voice vote as well.
Clerk Bolden? All in favor of accepting this procedure for to structure deliberations?
As amended.
As amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good.
Wonderful. Now we can proceed. So we will now go to the introduction to proposed Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 1 and Chapter 2. Do you have it all programmed? Ready to go?
Good evening. While Scott is getting our presentation up on the screen, I'm Teri Porter. I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation. And I want to thank you for beginning this series of public hearings for the UDO. We are very excited about getting to this point, and we look forward to your thoughts, your questions, and your comments, and also to those from the public. And this evening, Jim Spung from Clarion is here with us to give a brief overview of the UDO update process thus far, and then delve deeper into Chapters 1 and 2. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. It's good to see you all. Thank you for having us here today. As Teri mentioned, we are going to-
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself?
Yes, Jim Spung with Clarion Associates.
Would you, are you presenting Chapter 1 initially?
Yeah.
Because I don't think you should combine them, because otherwise you'll be short on time. So, yeah. So proceed with Chapter 1, thank you.
Okay. There we go. Go to the next one. Let me try this. Yeah, this will work. Yeah. Okay, so a brief introduction about Clarion Associates. We're a national land use and zoning consulting firm based in Denver, and we have an office in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. The practice has been around for about 25 years, and Don Elliott, who's my colleague, was unable to make it today. He had a medical appointment that he couldn't miss, but he sends his regards. But he was one of the founding principles of the firm about 25 years ago. We are fairly small, about 20 people, and we're made up of planners, attorneys, landscape architects, and designers. And we, really, our core practice area is writing and updating zoning codes. We've completed about 200 zoning code updates around the nation in about 25 years, with about a 98% adoption rate. So been around for quite a while. So to start out, as Teri mentioned, I'm going to give a brief overview of the process generally, and then we're going to dive into Chapter 1, take a short pause for questions, and then we'll move on to Chapter 2. So why update the UDO? Here you can see a bulleted list of some, some goals that were set out initially to do this project. First and foremost, you have a new comprehensive plan, which outlines the vision for the community in the next 20 or 30 years. That's really the driving force behind updating your policies and your rules, is to implement that plan, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And there you can see the other bullets here promote affordable housing. Student housing pressures in the city have grown, have been growing, and we'll address that as well. Promote more sustainable development. This is good follow-up discussion from the earlier presentation about sustainability. Improve general user friendliness, and then to make the development review process more predictable and efficient. So those were the general goals that we worked with in updating this document. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, there are several goals and policies that this new UDO addresses. There's a link on the project website, you can see there where that red arrow is. Staff put together a spreadsheet outlining which policies and goals were addressed in which section of the ordinance. We encourage you to look at that. As far as the process goes, we began this project in January of 2018, so just about two years ago. And the first step was really stakeholder meetings and outreach. We came to Bloomington, we talked to a lot of stakeholders and the public, and elected and appointed officials to figure out, you know, what are the primary goals of this project, which we mentioned earlier. The next step was an assessment report, where we consolidated all of that information that we received into a report, essentially laying the groundwork and the roadmap for how this update project would, would unfold. After we had that report ready, we came back to Bloomington, made a presentation, held a series of public meetings. And then, when everyone bought into that, we started actually drafting the code, which was step, step three. And we drafted it in three different phases: districts and uses, development standards, and the administration and procedure sections. For each one of those, we came back to Bloomington, presented the material, held another round of meetings with several stakeholders and elected and appointed officials. We received a lot of comments. We folded all of those comments into a consolidated draft, which we, again, came back and presented in a series of meetings. We got a lot more comments about things. We incorporated those comments, turned around an adoption draft, which we came back and presented to the Plan Commission in August and September. Got a lot of comments back on that, made more revisions, and now we're here today. So there's, there's been approximately 42 public meetings to date, specifically about this update project, seven Plan Commission hearings, you can see the dates there. And in September, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended adoption of the UDO. So as was mentioned earlier, there are 12 more council meetings on the table. We don't know if we'll need all of those meetings, but there are several opportunities to, to make comment and revisions if needed. So we wanted to highlight, just at a high level, a couple of things that we heard from the Plan Commission, and generally in the process, of topics that were, I don't know, interesting, and that were highly debated among staff and the public and elected and appointed officials. The duplex, triplex, fourplex uses were one of those. Here you can see a bulleted list of what the Plan Commission decided as far as the standards for those. All of those uses require conditional use permit, a public notice, and a public hearing in the residential zones. Existing lots in the R1, 2, and 3 zones are not allowed to be subdivided to create more duplex, triplex, or fourplex uses. Occupancy is limited, there's contextual design requirements for these structures, as well as the bedroom counts are limited. So you'll dive more into detail on this during the next meeting, which covers Chapter 3, the use regulations. But we wanted to bring it to your attention that that was a subject that received a lot of attention. Here you can see the use table showing where duplex, triplex, and fourplex would be allowed as proposed in the draft, those last three rows on the table. Again, a C indicates it would be a conditional use, and a P would mean it would be a permitted use. Another topic that came up was accessory dwelling units. This one was, was debated among the public. The Plan Commission recommends that accessory dwelling units remain a conditional use throughout the city. They would be allowed on any property with an owner occupied, single-family, or duplex dwelling. You can only have one on a, on a lot. They did raise the number of bedrooms to two from one, as well as the square footage maximum to 840 square feet. And lastly, this draft proposes removing the 300-foot spacing requirement from the current UDO. So those are two things we wanted to bring to your attention. Now to shift focus to Chapter 1. This is the, the general structure of the new UDO. There are seven chapters. Again, we'll be talking about Chapters 1 and 2 tonight. And first is the ordinance foundation. There's not a whole lot to talk about here. These are the contents of that chapter. We largely carried forward the content from the current UDO, and clarified language. We did clarify a lot of language in the transition from prior regulations section. The, one of the, the important things that the council will decide is ultimately when the UDO is adopted, and when it becomes effective. And those are two different dates. The adoption date is the actual day of the hearing where it's adopted. The effective date is the day upon which those rules become the law, to where they're actually used by the community. We typically recommend a three-to-six-month lag period between the adoption date and the effective date. This allows staff to update application forms, to provide training to the staff about the new rules, to reach out to the development community, to the public. And it's also a testing period, to where the staff can review applications against both the current and the new UDO, and identify any areas where the amendments are needed. The planning and transportation staff anticipate that the effective date will be the same date upon which the zoning map can, the zoning conversion map is adopted, but that's something that the council can discuss. Another important note is that any petitions that are submitted between the adoption date and the effective date are reviewed under the, the UDO that's in effect at that time. So if this new UDO is adopted and someone submits a petition the next day, that petition would be reviewed under the current UDO, because that's the one that's in current effect. And then any approvals that are granted under the old UDO are still valid under this new UDO. So regarding the zoning map, we did want to bring this to your attention. There's, we proposed two different phases of zoning map updates, the first being a conversion map, and that's simply renaming zoning districts from their current name to the new name proposed in the, in the new UDO. This doesn't include changing the colors of any parcels on the map, it's not rezoning anything, it's just simply converting them from what they are today to what they will be called in the new- in the new draft. The next phase would be a revised zoning map. So, this is where the city and the Council would actually consider rezoning properties to implement the comprehensive plan. There are a number of new zoning districts that we'll talk about tonight that aren't in the menu of districts currently, and they're not mapped anywhere in the city. And that second phase, the revised zoning map, would be an opportunity for the city to apply those districts on the map. So, with that, are there any questions on the general overview or chapter one?
Thank you. Other questions from Council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I have a few questions about the purposes section.
Sure.
The item number two, it says promote the public health, safety, morals, ecosystem services, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. Is this taken from Indiana Code or something? Why are we saying that we need to promote the morals of the community through this document? Seems rather strange.
I believe that that's taken from your current UDO, but I'd have to double-check. We didn't change a lot of language in this section.
Okay.
Most of that language is carryover from the current UDO. It's very typical language, enabling like, language that's used for zoning ordinances. The only thing that really changed in that section of the code, I believe, is just updating references to our comprehensive plan. So, the current UDO says the growth policies plan, I believe. This just says the, generalizes it to the comprehensive plan. So, those are the type of changes you would see in that section of chapter one.
So, there's no legal reason why we have to have that in there? As far as you know?
That's a question I'd have to ask our legal staff. That's a pretty standard purpose statement that are used in ordinances of this kind, the general health and safety and welfare of-
And morals.
Well, that's, again, general language. It's in the current UDO right now.
Mr. Rooker was about to jump up. Did he have something to add?
Yes, I do believe that we, Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington, I do believe we see that language in city code, or excuse me, in the state code. When it adopts a zoning ordinance, the legislative body shall act for the purposes of, and then there are a number of items listed, one of which is promoting the public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, et cetera. So, it's from state law.
But does that mean we have to have it in ours?
That is an outstanding question. This tracks state law, so I don't think it makes any difference whether or not we recite it probably, but I'd want to think about that some more.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sturbaum.
We drafted a comprehensive plan, and it had some very clear directives in it. One said avoid placing these high-density forms in single-family neighborhoods, referring to duplex, triplex, fourplex. One said it is important to protect existing single-family housing stock within this district. The conversion of dwellings to multifamily and commercial uses should be discouraged. At what point were you authorized to go away from the comprehensive plan and actually propose something directly contradictory to this language in the comprehensive plan? I'm asking you.
I can answer that question, Councilmember Sturbaum. The consultants are taking the direction from staff and public input, and so this was something that was proposed from the beginning. There are many goals and policies in the plan that contradict one another. I do believe that we're talking about chapter one. This is something that we'd be happy to discuss at a later time, but-
Chapter one is the-
It doesn't-
... relationship between the comprehensive plan and the UDO. That's-
But there is not specific language on the places that we're talking about, I believe. I think you're just asking, it just simply references the comprehensive plan.
So, the comprehensive plan, what is the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the directives to the consultants? I understand, I've heard this said, that the comprehensive plan says all kinds of things that are contradictory. This language is very clear. It was a conscious choice to deviate from the language of the comprehensive plan. I'm asking, because of the relationship between the comprehensive plan and the UDO, I'm asking, when did this deviation come? And was it our consultants who suggested this? Was it public input that you say suggested this to happen? Was it the mayor's office? Was it planning?
This, again, there's language in the plan that clearly contradicts one another. The plan talks about expanding our housing choices throughout the community, introducing what we were calling the middle housing. So, that's something that was considered throughout this two-year process that we talked about with public engagement. At the point at where it's now, again, in the presentation, it was pointed out that these uses are being proposed as conditional. There was also discussion about where they are appropriate in existing areas of the community as opposed to new areas. And again, those things were deliberated and discussed during the Plan Commission. So, I don't believe the characterization that you are describing is a fair characterization, that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Well, as I read the comprehensive plan, it gave direction where this, so this density could go and where it should not go. It was pretty clear. You know, the references you're referring to are talking about doing centers, urban centers, on edges, on corridors. Nowhere did it say go into the neighborhoods. And it's, I'm asked, I'm not getting an answer to the question.
I believe I answered the question. Again, we directed the public process and the consultants to utilize that and through feedback, and that's where it is at this point in time. It was something that was clearly identified in the comprehensive plan as a housing option for us to consider, and that's what we did through this process.
Thank you.
So, we have run out of time. Are there further questions from Council? Okay, I had one involving, the maps will follow the adoption of the UDO that you described in the spring of 2020. They'll take direction from the UDO, they'll take direction from the comprehensive plan. And will they also, will they evolve from planning? Will the Clarion Associates be involved in that, in the drawing of the maps? And then, at what point does the public become involved in feedback regarding the maps? Could you describe that a bit?
I'll go ahead, again, just to state my name. Scott Robinson, Assistant Director for Planning and Transportation. Thank you for the question. There's a couple of points of clarification. So, one of the things that we're required to do by state code is to notice everyone. So, as part of that process, it's a little bit different notification process. So, like this, everybody, every property owner received a postcard in the mail. We'll have to do that with the conversion map, so that would be step one. Jim described that process with the conversion map. So, that's something that we would do early in 2020 so that we could get the conversion map. The second step was the larger, how do we rezone or look at the other changes? And yes, that would be another step that would have to go through another noticing requirement. But again, we would look at the comprehensive plan and have public informational meetings, feedback meetings, so that we identify those areas. The comprehensive plan does identify some locations that we should be looking at, you know, like the existing hospital site is one, the southwest area of the community of areas to look at. So, we do have Clarion under retainer to help us through that process.
Thank you. Further questions from Council? Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public. If the public would like to speak, you have three minutes per person, and this is, will be on the introduction that you just heard, as well as the ordinance foundation for the UDO. And I would invite you to make any general comments that you have at this time as well regarding the UDO.
Hi, Peter Dorfman, near West Side. I don't need three minutes. I just wanted to rise to reaffirm the objection that Chris Sturbaum made about the misalignment between the comprehensive plan and the UDO. I don't think that it's fair to characterize this as something that has been widely discussed in public meetings. I've been involved in many of these meetings, and it's really late in the process that that misalignment has been brought up. I'm particularly concerned about the very definite advice in the comprehensive plan that we should have polycentric development in the city with small kind of resale, retail areas scattered around the city to serve individual neighborhoods, kind of like what we have at the corner of Henderson and Highland in multiple places, which would relieve the need for residents of the city to rely on access to the downtown to the degree that has been obsessively reinforced in these discussions about the UDO. I think it is really important to resolve that misalignment. I think the public needs to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorfman. Please step up, and you have three minutes.
So, I have-
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Michelle Henderson. I've been, I've lived in Bloomington for 26 years. I've been involved in social justice issues around education for about 20 years. And I've been following, I'm going to speak specifically to the Near West Side, though I would like to say that whatever I say about the Near West Side also affects Bryant Park. This is an overview, which is why I'm talking now. You're going to be hearing, obviously, from different viewpoints, and I've done a lot of research about some different viewpoints when it comes to upzoning or deregulating zoning. I have a handout, which I thought I might display, but it looks like I can't display it. So, I will be happy to send this handout to everyone on the City Council, and if there's a way to make it public for everyone who's viewing, then I would love to do that, but I'm not going to take time at this moment because I have three minutes. So, there are several different viewpoints. One is not in my backyard. Not in my backyard is traditionally politically conservative and upper-income resident, white-collar jobs. They tend to have larger houses, four-plus bedrooms plus three-plus bathrooms, often 2,000-plus square feet on large lots from half acre to an acre. The price range could be from 300 to 1,000, to over, the price range of that house could be from 300,000 to over $1 million in Bloomington. They are generally lacking in diversity. Their neighborhood schools tend to be less than 15% free and reduced lunch.
Ms. Henderson, if I could interrupt you, it looks like we can display that if it would be helpful.
Yeah, so I'm right here. So, yeah, so they tend to be lacking in diversity. They have, they're often older white men. Neighborhoods have covenants and homeowner associations. They're protected from upzoning. They support an agenda of traditional family values. They're motivated to organize when they feel their neighborhood values are threatened by outsiders. So, the goal is to keep their, keep low-income people out of my neighborhood. This is the traditional way of looking at a NIMBY or a not in my backyard. Yes, in my backyard, you'll be hearing from, but I'm not really seeing them here tonight. It's a political intersection of neoliberals, libertarians, and conservatives, including Donald Trump, Todd Young, and Trey Hollingsworth. They tend to be upper-income residents, tech, business, real estate development, real estate development, investment, and sales. They tend to have rentals in urban core. They're generally high rent, and they're protected by gentrification from changing in zoning. They are lacking in diversity. They're mostly white, younger men. Neighborhoods are urban, and schools are not taken into account due to youth of activists. They support an agenda of national and international developers who have donated millions to both Republican and Democratic campaigns to deregulate zoning. They are motivated to organize by a lack of housing for young professionals. The goal is to increase density, to, increasing density will increase housing supply and will trickle down to low-income residents over the next 20 to 30 years. New green buildings will help the environment by reducing carbon footprint in the next 10 to 30 years. I want to speak for already in my backyard. They are politically-
Ms. Henderson, I'm afraid-
Sorry?
Your three minutes has expired, but I think that this might apply for, you know, your next comment, if you were willing to wait until chapter two.
I will.
We could continue.
And then I will speak to already in my backyard.
Very good. Thank you. Is there further public comment? This is on introduction and chapter one, which is the ordinance foundation, but you may speak generally about the UDO if you care to. Okay, seeing no other public com, do we have public comment? And I forgot to mention, if you would please sign in when you, when you're at the podium, that would be helpful to the clerk for the minutes.
Can I sign it after, or you want me to do it now?
After you speak.
Huh?
After you speak.
Okay. I'm a little late, so this might be redundant. My name's Ed Bernstein. I was at the other meetings of the Planning Commission, and this seems like a deja vu all over again. I, first, I take umbrage of the fact that I live in Elm Heights, that we are, you know, white-bred, right-wingers. I've been a progressive my whole life. I'm 75 years old. This seems to be a generational issue. Many of us moved into these areas. My house was a pit, and, you know, we spent much of our lives refinishing them and getting them better. I don't think destroying core neighborhoods is going to do anything. I think the young people who are supporting this, I appreciate the idealism, but I think they're not looking at the total picture. And many of the neighborhoods in Bryant Park, the West Side, were a disaster area in the 80s. And, you know, people worked very hard to bring those things up. I think this is very, very short-sighted. I think we have to look at the long term. I think there are a lot of areas we're going to have this hospital torn down. I have a studio in South Bloomington that I can get to on my bicycle in 15 minutes from the center of downtown. There's plenty of land there for having these triplexes, quadroplexes. You're going to destroy this town, and as I used to tell my students, you're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Further public comment? Okay, we're back to Council then for comments. Who would like, anyone like to comment?
Mapping is part of what we just talked about in this first chapter also, isn't it?
Well, yes, during the introduction, it was touched upon, so it's, yes, if you'd like to make a comment about that.
Yeah, I really don't have any more comments on section one.
Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, just looking at the purpose section in chapter one, I think that we can, we should add reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and preparation for climate change impacts in our community as one purpose of this ordinance, because that has certainly become front and center for city government, and it should be front and center for everybody's plans for how our community develops in the future. So, I'll be proposing an amendment to add that to the purpose section. I don't think we should be regulating morals. That's a minor thing, but I think that should come out. I also don't understand why we have, we call out on number 19 in purposes, we call out the sexually-oriented businesses. I mean, there are a lot of things that might have negative zoning impacts if you live right next door to it. Why are we calling out sexually-oriented businesses? Just seems like, why should we highlight that? Doesn't make much sense to me. I understand that it was just carried forward from the previous, but hey, it's an opportunity to clean up and make it a little more logical. So, those are just a couple of things I'm thinking of for the purposes section. And then, I just wanted to agree with, with Mr. Robinson that I don't see that some of the changes proposed by the comprehensive plan, by this UDO, go against the comprehensive plan. I think the comprehensive plan had some internal inconsistencies, but I think the overall thrust of it was to really create more housing. We had a big section at the front of the comprehensive plan saying we need more housing. And so, I think that this, this UDO and some of the more controversial segments do try to do that. So, I would disagree with Councilmember Sturbaum on that. But we'll have plenty of time to talk about that and to hear from you all about those issues later. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, and we'll open this up to questions as well, because I neglected for a second round of questions. If anybody has a question? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll just go back to comments. And Councilmember Volan, I think, was next.
Yeah, first of all, I'm having a little trouble setting up the timer for the four-minute limit for debate. I'll try to get that done. I've set it up for myself. I have a very vivid memory of debating PUD and arguing about where cars should be parked in front of a certain building. And I invoked Chapter Six of the GPP, which was very clearly titled. It's called "mitigate traffic." Uncontroversial, we should be mitigating automobile traffic. Go back and read Chapter Six of the GPP. Very clear, thorough, the entire chapter, not little pieces of it. So I have a problem with anyone concentrating on a line, in a paragraph, in a section, in a chapter, and that over everything else. I remember also at the time, very clearly, Councilmember Mayer saying in his public comments on the issue that the Comprehensive—or the GPP was just a plan, that we don't have to follow it slavishly. We don't have to follow it every letter. And I never forgot that. So here we are now questioning the relationship of the plan to the code, and I'm like, why the double standard? I think that this is a constant negotiation. The reason that we're here right now is because it's not simply a matter of the Plan Commission hearing. The council is to hear it, to take in the concerns of all the aspects of the city. And I would, you know, ask everyone for indulgence as we navigate and negotiate the implementation of this plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterborn.
Yes, I just do affirm that the Comprehensive Plan was a community document. These chairs were filled when we were doing that. There are plenty of witnesses to how that Comprehensive Plan went, and I remember it very clearly. And I did not recognize some of the ideas that came later. Simply didn't. Didn't see it coming, don't know where it came from, and didn't see it in the plan. And while you can find a lot in this plan, some of it is very clear, and there is no clear directive to put these in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. This is more of a comment, and I'll go through this much more thorough and more than we already have, and many of us have done this hard and ad nauseam. But what I didn't see—and we've talked a lot about periodic reviews. We've also said this will be a document that may last for the next two decades. But we've also talked about periodic reviews every three to five years or whatever, and I didn't. And maybe I've missed it, but I didn't see that listed anywhere or the concept of that. Is that something that we think needs to be part of the document, or is it something that'll be initiated by council or initiated by staff? Or am I just blowing in the wind?
Do you want to propose the question to staff?
Sure, make it a question.
Okay, Mr. Robertson, would you like to respond?
Yes, our intent is—this is a three-ring binder, and, you know, it shouldn't be set in stone for the next 20 years. It's something that we'll continually look at and amend and revise as needed. You know, I think the current UDO was last adopted in 2007. It's been laying around for a long time, and we need to do a better job of making sure we're addressing the needs of the community on a more frequent basis.
And will that be referenced at some point? I want to do that, but I also would like to avoid in the future where we hold up a document that's 10 years old and, you know, like that's carved in concrete and not able to be discussed or at a defense or one or the other. Just a normal review, because things will change.
I believe since it is an ordinance, we would not be advisable to put that in within the ordinance, but it—that is something that we could do to acknowledge that in the adoption process. But it probably would not be advisable to have that within the actual ordinance itself.
Okay. And we can legislate morals in our document, but we can't legislate when we want to review this. Thank you.
Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, you know, the 2002 GPP was also a community document. It was also debated by everyone in the community. It's just that Councilmember Sterborn and I weren't in the room when it was passed. The 1991 GPP was also a community document. So I kind of don't buy this logic. Also, I want to remind everyone that a vote of six members of this body can do almost anything with respect to the law. We can suspend rules. We can reopen questions. We can and we have done so. That's by state law, and that's by necessity. Very, very, very few things require unanimity. So even when it comes to revising this document—I mean, this document by state law has to go through the most rigorous process. But so as to discourage change, but, you know, the Planning and Transportation is saying we should be revising it a little bit more often than once every 18 years. They're right about that. But we should not be afraid to reopen any given question within a document whenever we see fit. We all just know how much work it takes to do an overhaul of this. Nobody wants to do it that often. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
I have one. I guess I'll address the debate between Councilmember Sterborn and Councilmember Volan. I was involved in the Comprehensive Plan, and it was my understanding that the type of densities that are referred to as—and perhaps occurring within this current UDO draft implies within neighborhoods. And the Comprehensive Plan, my interpretation of it, is that it speaks about neighborhood edges as transition zones, not within neighborhoods. Now, it's true that it's conditional use for plexus, but that the approval will depend upon the disposition of the planning staff to the Plan Commission, to the BZA. And so I think that that is—I think it presents a hazard for neighborhoods, put it that way, and I'll elaborate a bit more later. So if there's no other comment, then we are ready to proceed on to Chapter Two, Zoning Districts. And you have 20 minutes for presentation.
We're just waiting for it to get up there. So thank you, council.
You're waiting for slides?
Yeah.
We'll start as soon as the slides appear.
So the next chapter is Chapter Two. This one is addressing the zoning districts. This is the contents of that chapter. You can see there are general introductory language about zoning districts generally, and then there are four or three sections related to residential districts, mixed-use districts, non-residential districts, a section regarding PUDs, and then overlay districts. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time diving into the details. I did fail to mention that you all should have received the summary memo of all the significant changes in the draft. I encourage you to go back and read that document, as it provides a 12-page overview, which is still a pretty high level of the changes in this chapter. But I'll talk about a few of those today. So generally, we've presented this information in a new format and organization that we think is a little bit more user-friendly than the current UDO. You can see on the left page there, there's a clear purpose statement and an illustrative graphic showing the general character of each district. On the right-hand side is a table of dimensions, generally for the lot and buildings, as well as a graphic to help provide a visual for how those dimensions relate to the lot. So we think this is a pretty intuitive way for the public to understand what they're seeing in the document. So high level for some of the significant changes, we've introduced four new zoning districts, the R1, R4, MS, and PO districts to help implement the Comprehensive Plan. The R1 district is a large-lot residential district that helps fill a gap in your current code. Right now, the largest lot size in the UDO is about 110,000 square feet. The next smallest is 8,000 square feet. So that R1 is a 20,000-square-foot lot intended to fill that transition a little bit easier. The R4 district is a small-lot residential district that's intended to be for more urban infill-type uses. A lot of the PUDs that have been approved in the past are in the 5, 4, 5, 6,000-square-foot range, which you currently don't allow in your current lineup of districts. So the R4 would introduce that. The MS is the mixed-use student housing district that we'll talk about in detail in a couple of slides. And PO is a parks-and-open space district that is a district solely intended for parks and open space. The next three bullets address dimensional standards, which you'll probably get more into in the Development Standards section of the code. Generally, we've reduced minimum lot sizes, lot widths, impervious areas for more efficient and sustainable development. The current minimum lot sizes in Bloomington are pretty large. Most of them are 1 to 2 acres. And when you're developing in an infill site, if you have one building on 2 acres, everything is spread out, which encourages sprawl and driving, and nothing is close, and it's difficult to walk to. And it's very expensive to buy 2 acres to have to build a building. So those things were adjusted. Again, the memo provides a narrative related to that. And then lastly, the height limits that were adopted by the council in 2017 for the downtown still apply to student housing and dormitory uses, but the heights that were previous to that, we've reintroduced into the code as—for the downtown areas. We've also updated the PUD qualifying criteria, so Bloomington has seen a fair share of PUD development, and I think this is a sign that your current code doesn't work for what the market needs. We think we've addressed that with the new lineup of districts and the new standards introduced into the draft. So we were proposing to narrow the gate by which someone can request a PUD. And here you can see the bullets of what someone would need to comply with in order to qualify to have a PUD district. The real intent there is that it's a negotiated district, and the city should really be receiving something much more—much better than they could otherwise build under the base zoning districts. There has to be some clear benefit to the city. So the mixed-use student housing district is a new district that we've introduced. One of the first things that we heard when we got here during the assessment phase was student housing. It's a big challenge in Bloomington. Being a university town, there are a lot of students. There's a huge demand for building student housing. This was primarily the reason why that height limit was adopted for the downtown, is to help limit really big-scale student housing projects in areas of the city that you didn't want those projects. And this new mixed-use student housing district is really intended to allow those big projects in the areas that you do want them, as outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. Adjacent to campus, along underdeveloped commercial corridors, in areas that are well-served by transit. Really, this district is aimed at providing that use in those areas to reduce the market pressures in the other areas of the city, the downtown, the core neighborhoods, and so on. Just like we talked about with the zoning map, the MS district is a new zone, so it's not being mapped as part of the conversion map. That will be part of the discussions when the city evaluates the rezonings that will be proposed. So another important element of this is we've also defined student housing and dormitory as a use, as a specific use. Right now, it's folded into the multifamily category, which makes it really challenging to regulate and to monitor and to limit where student housing goes and where you want traditional multifamily housing to go. So student housing is defined as any building or structure that's multifamily, that has units with four or more bedrooms. And it's not very common that you see a four-bedroom apartment building in a non-university town. And here you see five-bedroom apartment units. And those things typically are occupied by students. In addition, any building where more than 33% of the units are three-bedroom. So if you have a building with all three-bedroom units, it's probably going to be tailored to students. And then lastly, if you have a shared hallway or common area for bathroom and cooking areas, that's probably more like a dormitory that would fall into this category. So we'd like to reiterate that just because there's a student housing or dormitory zone doesn't mean that's the only place it's allowed. That's where the big stuff is allowed. You can see on the bottom there, there's a table showing where student housing and dormitory uses are permitted throughout the city. You can see they're allowed in the RM zone as a conditional use, RH, all the mixed-use zones, except for the Employment District. So they are allowed in several areas of the city, but there are limitations, and this table helps represent what those are. We've introduced maximum floor plate areas. So you can build student housing in downtown, but it can only be on a 10,000-square-foot floor plate, which is relatively small. And I'll show a graphic on the next slide of what that is. You're also limited in how high you can build these projects in areas outside of this new mixed-use student housing district. So it's not discouraging it everywhere. It's encouraging it where you want it to be. We've also introduced a 300-foot spacing requirement, which is about the size of a city block in the downtown. Here you can see a graphic just to help visualize how big these things may be. There you can see a 5,000-square-foot footprint, 10, 20, the 300-foot length. And there you can see the Smallwood project is about 54,000-square-foot floor plate, and it's the size of an entire block. So we think that this is a strategy to help the city move forward in allowing student housing, but really focusing it in the areas that it makes the most sense. And this new district helped achieve that. In addition, it's important to note that the dimensional tables throughout this chapter reference neighborhood transitions. This is really important for the neighborhoods to understand that even though they may be adjacent to a commercial property or a multifamily zone, that the projects that are built next to them have to respect the scale of that adjacent neighborhood. So here you can see a single-family home. If it's—if any new development that's adjacent to the RE1, 2, 3, or 4 districts have to meet these transition standards. If you're within 50 feet of that single-family zone, you can only build to the maximum height of the residential zone that you're next to. The next 50 feet, you can go up one more story, and beyond that, you can go up as high as the district would allow otherwise. So this is really intended to help eliminate those towering multifamily or student housing projects right next to a residential neighborhood or a commercial property. So affordable housing was also a huge priority of this code update, and we think that this chapter is probably one of the most important in implementing the affordable housing goals and initiatives. In the Development Standards chapter, you'll talk about the incentives for building affordable housing, but there are a lot more indirect ways that you can encourage affordable housing. We think that this new student housing strategy with having a district and a use will help relieve pressures on other forms of housing throughout the city. The new R4 district, which allows for a 4,000-square-foot lot, would help provide more affordable housing to folks. It may not be deed-restricted, but because you're building on smaller lots and they're smaller homes, they're likely to be at a lower price point than would otherwise be for a 7,000 or 8,000-square-foot lot. Again, reducing the minimum lot sizes for multifamily and mixed-use from the 2-acre minimum to, I think, 5,000 square feet allows for small-scale projects that don't require huge investments that then carry over into leasing fees or sales prices. And then lastly, we've removed the dwelling unit per acre maximums in the mixed-use districts. Instead of having a density cap, we've defined what the building envelope size is. There's a maximum height. There are setbacks. There's parking standards, landscaping requirements. Those things inevitably control how many—how big the building is and how many units can fit inside. And by removing that arbitrary density maximum allows the market to dictate, you know, what a site can actually accommodate for units. So that's the conclusion of our presentation. If you have questions?
Thank you. We will go to questions from council, beginning with Councilmember Sterborn.
Yeah, one of the issues with ADUs was they weren't fitting on lots. And did the revision of the R3 small lot have an effect on making those ADUs fit into existing lots better? Was there any adjustment in surface coverage or setbacks or any— Was there any adjustment in surface coverage or setbacks or anything? I understood there were some changes made to make the ADUs easier to place on lots. Is that factual?
So, couple of responses there. So you're referring to the R3 lot size?
You made some adjustments to those lot sizes.
Right.
And did that have anything to do with allowing the ADUs to fit better?
Yeah, you can.
Hi, Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager. The change in minimum lot size, so the issue with the ADUs that we have had and was reported at our one-year report to this body after they were added to the UDO, indicated that a lot of ADU requests are immediately shut down because the lots don't meet minimum lot size, which is a requirement. So I think that's what you're talking about. So yes, the changing the lot sizes, lowering that lot size does bring quite a few, a large majority of the lots into compliance of lot size, so would allow for more lots to be accessible. And I have those numbers, just not on me right this second, but we can get them to you.
Right. No, thank you.
Council?
I'll follow up after somebody else asks a question.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. Could you, have you sent these slides to us? And if you have not, could you?
Yeah, we'll have staff provide the slides. They'll be posted on the website, but we can-
I would like to receive them if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, could you speak a little to the RE zoning district and what the purpose of it is?
Sure. So the RE is the Residential Estate District. It's a current district that Bloomington has. It's fairly common to have that large scale. The minimum lot size is 2.5 acres, so it's a large estate lot that typically you find on the fringes or in rural areas. We carried that district forward because you have properties that are currently zoned, RE. And we didn't want to change that. I mean, I don't know if that's your question, is why you have it. It's because we carried it forward because you have existing properties owned, RE. The purpose statement for that district is, here it says, "intended to provide residential development on large lots while allowing for limited agricultural and civic uses."
Yes, I see that. I'm just wondering, do we expect to have new lots that meet this requirement? Because it seems like not an urban lot size. I mean, it doesn't make sense to add more lots of that sort unless it is to conserve sensitive environmental features. So I'm wondering if we could add that the purpose must include conservation of environmental features.
That could be the case. I would imagine that any request for plating and rezoning to this district would come before the council. So that's something that you would see if someone intended to create new lots under this district. Again, this may be something that you evaluate when you revise the zoning map in that second phase of map updates, that you maybe reconsider rezoning those RE properties to something else, if it's supported by those property owners and the council. But I think it would be tough to require conservation in that district. It would probably be through the subdivision tool that you would require that, which is viable.
I also noticed that the impervious surface coverage maximum for the district in the new UDO is 20%, whereas in the old UDO, it's 15%. Why has it been increased?
I'd have to go back and look at my notes. I don't know exactly right now.
Okay. Well, I would like an answer to that.
Sure.
Mr. Robinson, do you have a?
Yeah, I think I can address the impervious surface. If you look back at one of the earlier versions, there was commentary included in the sections that talked about some of the changes. Those are posted on the planning, you know, the UDO website. There is a section that talks about the impervious surface. So generally, those were increased to help address some of the infill issues and balancing that need for flexibility. In regards to the RE district, again, we just kind of looked at all those and evaluating that. There has been some changes into the lot development standards on buffer yards and other things, so that's something we can talk about later. Jim did talk about Chapter 5, the subdivision, so there's a conservation subdivision. So that would be a process to look at. This could be a district that could be applied during that subdivision process. Another thing that's, could be out there in the future, if the city were to annex areas outside their current boundaries, we have to apply the best fit of that land to what we have now. So again, it might be a possibility that this zone could be a good receptor for if we were to annex any other areas outside the city.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes. In the first UDO, we made an effort to regulate the kind of housing that students preferred by increasing the DUE ratio, where before 2006, a three-bedroom, a four-bedroom, or a five-bedroom unit counted as one dwelling unit equivalent. We raised it to 1.5 and 2, respectively, and we lowered the count for smaller than three-bedroom units. Can you explain the notion of this envelope and how it differs from it? Like, what's the practical upshot of replacing the DUE formulas with building footprint?
Right. So the DUE formulas were replaced with a few things. One of them is the new student housing use that's defined in the table as specifically-
We'll get to that.
-targeting that, those projects that were, you know, intended, marketing and intended for students. And I think the challenge with the DU conversion rates is that it polluted the multifamily use that was on the books, and it didn't seem to really be achieving its intent and purpose because you were still seeing a lot of these large student housing projects. And most of these were coming through PUDs, which is separate from the zoning. But to answer your question about the building envelope, it's, there are several development standards that a developer would have to meet to meet the code. And a lot of those are height. You know, you can only build four stories or five stories. The setbacks, so that automatically encloses an envelope of how large a building can be. In some cases, you have to provide parking, which takes up space on the lot, which will shrink the building. Landscaping buffers, which again takes up space. There's impervious surface maximums, which reduces how much space you can build on the lot. So when you factor in all of those things together, there's an envelope or a space in which a developer would have to figure out how many units he can fit in that building, as well as the definitions for multifamily and student housing. So we think that those controls allow a lot more flexibility in the market rather than having an artificial maximum density, because density is very difficult to visualize. You can have, you know, a 75 DU project that's townhouses or a seven-story building. It just depends on how big the lot is with regard to that. So it's difficult to regulate the product just purely on a density metric.
Thank you. I'll have more questions later.
Sure.
Before we go on to council, is there anyone who hasn't answered a question who would like to? Okay, I'm going to ask a question before Councilmember Sturbaum. It had to do with the size and spacing standards for student housing. Has that template been used in other cities with large student populations? Or something similar that I could research, that I could look at to see if it's been effective? Or is this something novel for Bloomington?
I think it's both. Bloomington's unique in that it's different than most places. But Don Elliott, my colleague, has drafted a lot of zoning codes for college towns, and I would defer to him to provide you references. We can get back to you and give you some examples.
Okay, could you relay that?
Sure.
Because some examples would be really instructive. So we'll go to Councilmember Sturbaum.
Yeah, so the residential district, R4, is not mapped. It has a lot of density in it. It looks like a tool that is ready to be used. And my question is, did you design that for the city of Bloomington? Or is that an R4 zone that you pulled out of your bag of zones and brought it here with some experience in other communities? And the rest of that is, where do you anticipate that zone going? Is it going to go on greenfield? Is it going to fit on rezoned commercial land? Or do you see it going into the single-family neighborhoods?
Okay. So the first part of the question is, it is a zone drafted for Bloomington. We didn't pull it from a different area. I mean, there are a lot of cities that have small residential lot zones, just like the R4, but they vary in their size. Some cities go all the way down to almost 3,200-square-foot lots, which we think is a little too small to fit infrastructure and a house and things. Other cities are more comfortable with 8,000-square-foot as their smallest lot size. So it really depends on the intent of the city. We think that this zone fits here well because you've already got a menu of districts that help complement this district. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the PUD development that Bloomington has been approving would fit into this zone without having to do a PUD, which is really the intent of creating this district, is to allow the smaller lots that are having to go through this PUD process because you don't have a tool today to accommodate those types of land uses. As far as where it's going to go, that's really up to the council to decide. It's not mapped. I think a good candidate may be portions of the old hospital site, could potentially be rezoned to R4. Could be greenfield development or PUDs that transition to some other development. So I guess it's to be determined by the market and what is proposed to the council.
And I don't know if it's appropriate to ask at this point, but the residential multifamily has been five unrelated for as long as I can remember. And there are a lot of uses that I think you described in the RM zone, student, what are those called? Student dorms. You know, a lot of fairly radical upzoning in the RM zone, and there hasn't been much discussion of that, and maybe that's Section 3. But could you talk a little about RM?
Yeah. So regarding student housing and dormitory specifically in the RM zone, as I showed on this slide, those would be limited to a 5,000-square-foot footprint, and they would be limited to three stories. So I'm not saying it's not a substantial structure, but when you factor in, if they are adjacent to neighborhoods, they've got to meet these neighborhood transition standards. So we feel that that's a fairly reasonable compromise to allow these uses in areas where it makes sense and at a scale that it makes sense generally.
Okay, that's time. Further questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
In the RM zone, if there is a single-family duplex, triplex, or fourplex in those zones, the chart says it's to be held to R2 district standards. And I'm wondering why, since it's in an RM zone, why wouldn't it be held to one of the more dense standards like R3 or even R4? Is there a reasoning behind that?
Yeah, let me go there real quick. So typically, if you're building a single-family duplex, triplex, or fourplex structure, it's going to be a different scale and character than it would be if it were a multifamily building. So it's common to default to a single-family district that would typically accommodate those uses and rely on those standards. I think in the original draft, the consulting team recommended that they meet the R3 or R4 standards, and that the staff responded and said, "No, we'd like it to be R2." So-
So maybe, Mr. Robinson, maybe can reply as to why that was?
Jackie.
Ms. Scanlon?
Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager. Well, the idea of having that separate section there was we often have issues now. It was supposed to be for lots that exist now that are single-family or have the, that's how the idea came about. Like, right now, when we have single-family designed lots in our current RM zoning district, they often are very small and have trouble meeting the requirements. So if they wanted to do a small addition or something, then they have to get a variance because they basically don't match the wider setbacks that are included in the RM. So that is kind of why we wanted to go with the, why we wanted to go with having it be a separate, single-family design criteria for those lots. I think we're open to, if you would like them to be smaller lots, we found that R2 was roughly kind of the type of lot that we have had, that we have seen so far, that exists now in those RM districts. Obviously, that could change with the remapping, but addressing the issues that we have now, we felt R2 was a good match, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask for clarification, since I didn't understand that at all?
Clarification, I suppose.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand.
We were still on-
So the reason to have the separate uses, to have the separate design standards for the single-family is that to hold them to the multifamily design standards, particularly the setbacks, has, right now, it's burdensome for single-family lots that already exist in the RM zoning districts.
To turn a single-family lot into a multifamily lot, it's cumbersome, so you're using-
No, no. To have a single-family lot in the RM zoning district where it's just one house and you want to do some sort of addition, the setbacks of your zoning, which is RM, don't really match your use properly. And so this was a way to address that so that those lots could continue, you know, that they can continue on, but not necessarily have to get rezoned. For example, if they're in the middle, you know, of a donut of multifamily and there are old, single-family lots in that area, that they can continue on a single-family and be able to do small additions or upkeeps that they traditionally would be able to do if they were in an R2 or an R3, even though they're in an RM. Does that make sense?
A little more.
Okay, I'll work on it and get you some, a better answer. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Sturbaum, if you have further questions, there's a second opportunity after public comment. Other questions, continuing with questions?
Well, I have a question.
You'd like to continue? Please.
Am I allowed? Okay. So the RMH, the residential manufactured homes, would that district or any other that is proposed make it possible to have like a tiny home village in the city?
Yes. So that's addressed in Chapter 3, which is the Use Regulations. There's a use type called cottage development, and that's essentially what you're describing. It's one lot where you have individual households that aren't manufactured homes, or maybe are, that are assembled around a common area. You can read the definition for cottage development. But that use type does exist, and it is allowed in all of the residential zones except for the RE. And it's also allowed in MN as a conditional use. And there are specific design standards associated.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public now. And this is on Chapter 2, Zoning Districts, but you can speak generally about the UDO as well.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander.
And please remember to sign in.
Yeah.
Okay, after your comment.
So kind of a review of how we got to this place. Before World War II, 100 years ago, 150 years ago, we built everything on grids, and I don't have any idea how that happened, but it did happen. It was very regular development. And then after World War II, the development changed very radically, and people started building mazes of cul-de-sacs off of highways. And at some point, it was decided to introduce zoning to try to regulate that process, and that's almost completely failed. On the southwest and southeast sides of the town, approximately 50% of the land area is a planned unit development, and so we're not following our zoning code. And these planned unit developments are very any-place USA. They're a cul-de-sac network that, it was just what was built in that time. And they're very unwalkable in particular. They're almost impossible to serve with transit, and they're intrinsically segregated. If you live in one neighborhood, you're not going to see people from the other neighborhood unless you're on the common street, which it's a highway, you know? And that common street, of course, doesn't have sidewalks. That wouldn't be me if I didn't say that. And it's very hard to support that kind of network, and it tends to be low-density. And so what I'm asking is, we should probably do away with planned unit development entirely. It has been used almost exclusively as a tool to allow inside the city, you know, the core extremely high density. And so we should allow that high density by right in all of the core, especially the commercial, the downtown, the mixed-use, the student-oriented areas. We shouldn't be requiring people to come for variance for things that are just absolutely normal developments, the way that we've been building for the last 50 years, you shouldn't need a variance for. And if you look at, you know, the ring around the town of PUDs is just, it's devastating for a transportation perspective, and we just, we shouldn't, you know, it says innova- for a transportation perspective, and we just, we shouldn't, you know, it says innovative and imaginative, and they're not. None of the PUDs we have are innovative or imaginative. The two that are, are, it's called South Dunn Street, and then that development south of Hopskotch on the B-line, and those are basically compatible with R4. So if you put, take from this proposal and put R4 in a lot more places, that would really do a lot to make sure we don't need these planned unit developments. But I want to say that this plan, especially this part of the plan, it's moving in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Cox Ash, and I wonder, Scott, is there any way you can put the timing thing up so I can see what my time is?
Councilwoman Bligh, I'm running, and you have three minutes.
Well, I hope I can do this fast.
You'll hear a bong in 30 seconds and a beep when your time is done. Ready?
Okay, first of all, I am concerned about affordable housing, and I really think that this density is not going to work for affordable housing. We're going to lose a lot of our owner-occupied, original, affordable housing to this density. If you look at Habitat for Humanity, you don't see multiplexes, and you don't see big, tall things and just certain amount of rental in there. They're all single-family housing. And to allow this density, I think is going to be horrible for the core neighborhoods and what we already have. If you have a little house that you bought for $100,000, you'd put 3.5% down, $3,500 or $5,000 down for buying that house, and you could finance it for 30 years. Say five years down the road, you want to build an ADU for your child or grandchild to help you out living in the house. Say that ADU is $100,000. So now your unit is $200,000. 20 years down the road, you have to go in a nursing home, and you want to sell that to that child or grandchild that helped you out in that ADU. First of all, the nursing home's going to require you to have a current appraisal and say the value, because they consider it commercial with that rental unit, $600,000. So now, your child or grandchild is going to have to put 30% down. You know what 30% of $600,000 is? $180,000. That's to finance it. Then you'll have to pay for 20 years instead of 30 years, and your rate's going to be a half percent to a percent higher. You've lost that affordability. Your child or grandchild is not going to be able to afford that because who has $180,000 for down payment on something like that? So automatically, you lose that house with its ADU, and investors going to invest in it. They're not going to put affordability on it. They won't rent it at market rate. So you've lost that. And that is what I am scared to death that will happen with this density. So please have a care. Don't allow these densities in these core neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I would just like to briefly recap. You will be hearing from arguments. There are people who are in support of changing the zoning from single-family housing to multifamily housing. I'd like to clarify for everyone who's watching, this is citywide. Every single neighborhood in our entire city will be zoned multifamily housing. There are people who disagree with this. Some of them have been called NIMBYs, not in my backyard. They are often in higher-income neighborhoods. Some people who are arguing for it have been called YIMBYs, yes in my backyard. Build more, build more, increase density. We think it will help with affordability. The fact is, the neighborhoods who will be most impacted by this policy, which is a radical policy, which we haven't even seen anything in the Herald Times about it, by the way, will in fact, will impact core neighborhoods downtown. I call those already in my backyard. They tend to be lower-income residents, young renters who work downtown or on campus in service jobs, single women, IU students, fixed-income residents, artists, entrepreneurs, IU and city staff. The houses are already small and dense, the lots are dense. Standard size is a two-bedroom, one-bath with around 1,000 to 1,400 square feet on small lots from 1/16th of an acre to even an 1/8th of an acre because they've already, many of them have been, already have been divided and are already half lots of what was already a small lot. The neighborhood schools are more than 80% free and reduced lunch. Fairview, for example, is 86% free and reduced lunch. It is a neighborhood school, and it is a low-income neighborhood. These neighborhoods are very diverse in terms of gender, age, profession, sexual orientation, culture, and race. The neighborhoods have no covenants or homeowner associations and no protection when you eliminate single-family housing. This supports the rights of vulnerable citizens. They support an agenda of the rights of vulnerable citizens. They have many yard signs supporting acceptance and diversity. Those citizens are motivated to organize by the threat to low-income neighbors and destruction of community, which has been in place for over 100 years, and it has been diverse for over 100 years. The goal is to protect our neighborhoods from being exploited by out-of-state developers. Do not remove the protection of single-family zoning.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter Dorfman. This is the first night of council deliberations on the UDO. You're going to be hearing a lot of technical arguments for and against the upzoning of Bloomington's core neighborhoods. Tonight's really not the time for that, but you'll be hearing a lot of that in the next few weeks. Tonight, I just want to give some comment on the overall context for this discussion. The idea of pushing apartment density into single-family neighborhoods in Bloomington is not new. The city's been trying to do it since the early '70s, when the Hooker administration tried to do urban renewal in the Near West Side. The residents there, led by the black community, managed to stop that effort, thankfully. They recognized that the way to make the West Side a desirable place to live was not by building up, but by developing homeownership. This was before there was such a thing as single-family zoning. Later administrations have tried to densify on several occasions. The residents have pushed back every time. The UDO that you have in front of you reflects, I think pretty clearly, Hamilton administration priority. The administration has never really said what its intent is this time around. They've been content to let Bloomington's young social justice warriors frame this as a debate about affordable housing and about climate change. Affordable housing has a very definite definition, and to the extent that you're talking about new construction, I don't believe there's anything in the UDO that addresses affordable housing. I've pointed this out directly to Mayor Hamilton, that there's nothing in the UDO that practically addresses either affordable housing or climate change. The mayor's response was, "Change is hard." That's a verbatim quote. So in the next few weeks, you're going to be having specific arguments about those issues, probably hours and hours of specific arguments. But I don't think that's what any of this is really about. I believe the true purpose of the UDO is to build as many market-rate apartments on the West Side of Bloomington as possible. Market-rate apartments. Why would the city want to do that? I think it's principally about the Trades District, which is developing into quite a pretty little open park. I believe the mayor thinks that housing is a key reason why tech companies aren't signing on as tenants in the Trades District. He would love to be able to say to them, hey, look at this, your data scientists can walk to work. This is not about low-income housing. I don't think this is about climate change. I think this is about housing for comfortably-employed people, even if even they can afford the luxury apartments that Bloomington is inviting private equity-backed developers to build once the plexes are allowed in core neighborhoods. Climate change and affordable housing are just the current fashionable excuses to shove apartment development into neighborhoods where houses are cheap and land is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name's Matt Flaherty. First, thank you, councilmembers, for your service and willingness to do the sometimes challenging work of improving and updating our zoning code to better reflect our community values and goals as laid out in the Comprehensive Master Plan. I've heard a few things that I disagree with, I suppose, and one is maybe we need to recognize the difference between affordable housing, subsidized housing, and market-rate housing affordability. Those are different things, and both of them are important, and the comp plan speaks to both. Also, duplexes and triplexes aren't apartments or apartment density, they're the same size as a house under the current UDO, and also can be owner-occupied, just like a house can be owner-occupied or renter-occupied. But I don't want to get too lost in the weeds. Actually, my point in coming up here, kind of like my friend Peter just mentioned, was speaking to some overall themes about this process, in particular about language and tone and assumptions. I know a lot of people here have been involved in this process for a while now. Plan Commission, as they work to listen to a lot of public comment, find compromises among competing visions for our built environment. I think things got heated sometimes with certain motivations being attributed where they may not exist. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that I think everybody up here is advocating for what they think is best and has like what's best for our community in mind. Or they do believe that. I've met with a lot of these folks who might see things differently than I do personally. And I think the challenging part is how to address missing middle housing needs and where that's going to go in town and how best to meet these goals in the context of providing diverse housing options, as our comp plan calls for, throughout the city, increasing market-rate housing affordability, which I just mentioned, enhancing social and racial equity, and becoming a more sustainable community that does meet the challenges of the climate crisis and helps us substantially reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. How we develop and how the choices we make in the built environment do impact those things. They're not simple straw arguments that have nothing to do with this. It's, I mean, read any of the planning literature. It's pretty clear that there's an impact between land use and greenhouse gas emissions, for instance. But again, I think everybody's advocating for what they think is best here, and I just hope we can all keep that in mind throughout this process. Reasonable minds can differ on exactly what policies we need to get us where our goals say we want to go, and people's different lived experiences, different levels of fear or concern about how our community might be changing, in addition to what research we've done and how much reliance we put into professional judgment from academics, practitioners, urban planners. All those things are different. So even with shared values, if we zoom out a little bit, I think we can all agree, we care about our community, we care about addressing the climate crisis. But even with those shared values, we might prioritize things differently and thus advocate for different policies. So acknowledging that folks are well-intentioned, but the reasonable minds can differ, I would say we need to strive our best to engage in discussion and debate that focuses on outcomes and impacts and really try to avoid taking personal offense. The climate change is a good example. I've spoken to the impact of housing types and density on transportation and building energy use emissions. That's, these are pretty clearly characterized in the literature, the academic literature, but somehow that's been inferred to be calling people climate-change deniers, which of course I've never said or done. So my point is just that while reaffirming my deep respect and care for everyone in our community, our diverse viewpoints, I really hope we can all make an effort to avoid taking offense and be careful about the inferences we draw about what people are saying about us simply based on the policies we're advocating for. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Bretheim. Thanks once again for listening. I was here when we argued about the CMP, and my understanding was that it was the underlying structure for the UDO, the underlying structure, and was going to be combined with the transportation plan into the UDO, that these documents relate to one another, and that's really important. Something that hasn't been addressed so far as I can tell is the precious nature of these small, old neighborhoods with their 30-foot lots, their old-scale development. All of the neighborhoods, the core neighborhoods and the edges, all the way out to city limits, is going to change, and we're going to have more people. The most recent study on number of people moving here was about 500 a year. The number that we've quoted has 1,000 a year, but we found out that that wasn't really true when an academic advisor or an academic professor did a survey. So it's not quite as big as we thought it was going to be, and we have all this extra land that can be developed that's empty now. We have developments that's going in at the Kmart site, we have the Marsh lot that's empty, we have the hospital site, we have edges and infill that can happen and will happen, and will be welcomed in the core neighborhoods, too. And all of these changes are important, can add to the precious characters of the different neighborhoods. Each neighborhood has its own character, each neighborhood should be respected for that, and those are some of the most charming things about Bloomington. Let's not forget that that's important. We have some duplexes and triplexes in the core neighborhoods, which are the only neighborhoods that have been targeted for the plexes, and they fit in really beautifully. Big, old brick things fit in with those small, 800-square-foot houses. Let's appreciate the preciousness and the character and the architectural value of the history there. Let's respect the diversity of the low-income people who live there and the racial diversity of those neighborhoods, where we have our Bannaker Center, and where we have people for a couple of generations have bought those old little houses and are really proud of them, and they're looking more beautiful every week. The affordability is really important, and I think it will be affected stunningly if we put in more multifamily housing. So let's do it gently. Let's find some way to make it reasonable so that it doesn't over-gentrify too quickly so that people on limited incomes will be moved out, and so that we can retain and really value those precious places that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm John Kennedy, and I'm going to be boring but short. All of you know that the current RC is going to be changed to R3. And if you look at the purpose statement for R3, I don't know if all of you have, but you have. The R3 district is intended to protect and enhance established residential neighborhoods by increasing the viability of owner-occupied and affordable housing dwelling units through small lots subdivisions, accessory dwelling units, and property improvements compatible with the surrounding development patterns. But the most important thing is, the conversion of existing housing stock to more intense land uses is discouraged. And so I think that if you look at the goal of R3, you'll see that it is not designed for more duplexes, triplexes, and I hope you'll keep that in mind. And if you look also at the document that was provided, that shows how the UDO maps to the Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan's 5.1, 5.1.2, and those things, talk about affordable housing and density, and the map to it in the UDO is R4 and the RM zones. And so I think that we have plenty of places to put more affordable and more dense housing in the UDO as it's stated, and it doesn't have to be in R3. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Paul Ash from McDowell. I'm repeating myself, but I think it bears repeating. Our core neighborhoods have 100-year-old sewers. We have streets that were designed for Model Ts. We just can't physically handle greater density. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name's Jean Simonian, and I'd like to speak to the financialization of housing. As Michelle mentioned, Trump, Young, and Hollingsworth have something in common besides being the same party. They all support upzoning. And before anyone points to the Democratic presidential candidates who have also come out in support of upzoning, realize that those candidates have imbued their proposals with regulatory controls, which are unavailable to us under Indiana state law, unfortunately, which is exactly why Indiana real estate is attracting private equity. which is exactly why Indiana real estate is attracting private equity investment. I'm not talking about your neighbor who also owns a rental house, okay? I'm talking about groups like Blackstone, half a trillion dollars in real estate assets. In fact, the CEO of Blackstone has said that housing has replaced gold on the global market as the primary store of wealth for the super-rich since 2008, since the recession. So it's no surprise that Trump supports upzoning, nor that Young and Hollingsworth, who have each sponsored YIMBY Acts in the Senate and House. Hollingsworth collects income from 41 real estate LLCs, and 40% of his 2008 political contributions were from Wall Street. The Center for American Progress Action Fund projects that Hollingsworth will personally save $4.5 million from his amendment to the tax bill, allowing real estate investors to benefit from the 20% pass-through tax credit on real estate investment. It's this sort of corrupt practice that drives equity investment globally. Our homes are put at increasing risk by predatory investment, and upzoning will accelerate this process exponentially because in Indiana, single-family zoning is one of the few tools we have available to prevent wholesale buyouts of neighborhoods. Those who claim, "No one will be forced to sell," clearly do not understand the powerful profit stake that underlines upzoning, whereby investors can and do inflate property valuations by higher value developments in proximity and then outbid individual buyers. The New York Times cited one in five homes in the U.S. are owned by private equity right now. That's 15 million homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Further comment? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mary Morgan. I'm Director of Advocacy and Public Policy for the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We represent over 800 businesses with over 30,000 employees, and these are people, like some of you, who own their own businesses, work in the community, care about the community, certainly do not want to destroy the neighborhoods. We hear every day that the missing middle housing is a serious concern for the sustainability of businesses. A lot of people want to move here and want to grow their businesses or want to live here because they went to school here and had a great experience, and they can't because they can't find the kind of affordable housing that they need. So I just wanted to let you know that these people are not necessarily going to storm the City Hall council chambers every single time you have a hearing, but they are out there, and I think that their voice needs to be heard, and I'll do my best to represent them. I'm also really concerned about the rhetoric that I hear. We do love this community and don't want to see it destroyed, and I feel like a lot of times we hear some rhetoric that is a little over the top, and that really disturbs me. I can guarantee you that the people I talk to about the need for affordable workforce housing are not necessarily social justice warriors, not necessarily even young, though they might think of themselves as young. So as we go through this discussion, I hope that you'll keep that in mind, that there's a multiplicity of voices here, and we're trying to have respect and respectful disagreements for this very serious process. Thank you very much for your work here tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Is there other comments? Please step up, and thank you for remembering to sign in.
Hi, I'm Vita Stanfield. I hadn't really planned to speak tonight, but it just occurs to me as I'm sitting here and listening to all this that we're all concerned about affordable housing. I spent my career working in childcare and daycare, and everybody's in favor of affordable childcare, but nobody wants to subsidize it. And so that's why you can't have quality childcare that's affordable, because it has to be subsidized. We cannot have affordable housing anywhere unless we are willing to subsidize it and unless people are paid enough to afford to live in housing. I just feel like I need to say that because it hasn't been said.
Thank you. Further comment from the public? Please step up. This will be your last opportunity tonight. Okay, we're back to council. Oops, sorry.
I'm Christine Mathieu, and I hadn't planned on speaking today, but given the conversation, I thought I'd add my two cents about this. One of the things -- I need to sign in just a second -- is that when we talk about affordable housing, I think there's this issue of, if you're talking about affordable housing in San Francisco, the land value there is extremely high, so the construction value of that in relative terms goes down quite low. But in terms of Bloomington, the construction nowadays, anybody who is in the construction business nowadays recognizes that it's very, very high. Construction per square foot right now is about, gosh, it's like $200 a square foot these days for pretty simple construction. When we start to talk about affordable housing downtown, the construction cost is going to be the same whether it is downtown or whether it's out of town, whatever. You know, what are we talking about, affordable housing? The most affordable thing we can do is to use the existing houses that we have. And what I keep wondering is when I hear about all of providing more and more density downtown, it's because you're trying to cram lots of housing on limited sites, but the construction cost is going to be the same, and that's what's really going to be driving whether something's affordable or not. I keep wondering two things, if in fact, what I've seen anyway, is that most of the housing that's going downtown is all student-directed. And is the goal here to basically have those of us who do live close to downtown, who've been here for many, many years, is the goal to have us leave and to move out of the downtown area so that everybody who lives downtown is directly related to IU? I mean, I don't think that's really, you know, it's a transitory group, people coming and going all the time. And I sort of look at this and I go, my goodness, what is the purpose of this? And I think the comments about the big developers was absolutely on target, and the places that are getting hit are university towns because we have a captive market. It's not a tourist town, it's not volatile in that respect. It is something that is a fixed market, and it's a great place for people, large developers, to develop their projects. Has anybody on this committee or have the planners coordinated with IU? I mean, what is the projections for the IU population? It goes up and down. It's what's driving this housing, right? And every time you build a new apartment downtown, there's an apartment, for instance, over on the east side out near 10th Street that's no longer wanting to be rented because it's not brand-new. So there's all this, you know, what's today's, it's going to end up becoming the housing that deteriorates over time. I mean, anyway, it's just a few comments, having heard what you were talking about this evening. Thank you. I recognize at the same time you're trying to do the best on this whole thing. Good luck.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? I see a few people shifting, and I don't know if they're going to get up or not. Okay, of course, we'll continue further meetings on the UDO, so you'll have another opportunity later on other evenings. So with that, we'll be back to council for additional council questions, and we have two minutes each if you'd like to ask further questions on Chapter 2. Any takers?
Over there.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yeah, in the R4 district, which isn't on a map anywhere yet, it looks like the height limit is 35 feet, so is the intention to keep those buildings to two stories, and why is that?
Yes, it is proposed to be, let's see. Yes, 35 feet is the proposed maximum, and I think it's to keep it in line with the single-family residential character of what that district is really intended to be. As was mentioned in some of the public comments, that some of the more intense land uses that are proposed in that district are intended to be at a smaller scale. So.
So if we're looking, if we would want to encourage row houses, for example, that would, we would want to use the residential multifamily zoning for those parts of the city?
You could use a number of zoning districts that would allow that attached single-family product, and you'd just be subject to the dimensional standards of the district that allows that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was, I'm just wanting to make sure we don't omit any of the middle that's missing, you know what I mean? So like a row house is three stories, that's, you know, attached, single-family. If we want that on West Third Street or something, we would say, okay, well, then we should consider making that residential multifamily, not R4.
Well, that type of product would currently be a permitted use in R2, 3, or 4, or multifamily, attached.
But not three stories?
You could build three stories with 35 feet. That would be 10-foot stories.
If you didn't have a pitched roof, I guess. If you had a flat roof, I suppose you could do it.
Right, and the definition for height is measured a little bit differently in this code, which you'll get into in the next chapter, but it's the average height of the building, and I think it's to the midpoint of a pitched roof, and it takes into account topography and different, it's the average height around the whole building, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sterbaum.
Yeah, since you weren't, since you weren't mapping the city, did you actually get out and analyze how much buildable space there was in the city, or has this all been an abstract project of using forms and zoning patterns from other communities? You know, for instance, the amount of space that is sometime, like used by the gas company, which is right by the B-line, it's almost a city block, you know, and then there's a city block that is south of the current convention center, and they're just city blocks of open areas to build in. Did you guys map what was available before considering pushing things into single-family neighborhoods?
No, we didn't do that exercise. We did look at, I mean, we did do a tour of the city during the initial kickoff trip, where staff toured us around to show us, you know, development on the ground, potential opportunity sites, old PUDs that were not developed. I think this exercise of drafting the code is to provide Bloomington with the toolbox necessary, the zoning tools, that you need to help implement the plan that you've laid out. And we think that the lineup of districts here, including R4, are the tools that you can use, and, you know, where you apply those on the ground is really up to the city, but you have the tools available.
I asked that because I walked the city with Donovan Ripkma, who is a well-known urban planner, and he estimated we had 40 to 50 years of build-out in that immediate area, and it's been maybe seven years since then, but there's all this underused land, there are parking lots and car lots along South Walnut. There are acres of land to be redeveloped without going into the historic and important core neighborhoods, and I think a mapping process would have been useful. Thank you.
Yeah, and that would be a great opportunity for that revised zoning map, to reevaluate the zoning for those parcels and to see if a different zoning is more appropriate.
Okay, further questions from council? This is second round questions on Chapter 2. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Throughout this chapter, there are requirements for landscaping, and there are requirements as a percentage of the area, and then there are requirements for a maximum of impermeable surface. So a lot of times those add up to 100%, so you either have a built structure of some sort or you have landscaping. Is that the, is that intentional? Is it, I mean, when you say landscaping, do you just mean non-built could be grass, or do you actually mean a certain number of plants planted there? I'm trying to understand this terminology.
Right. So the, in the definitions chapter, there is a definition for landscape and landscape area. So that landscape area is intended to be improved landscaping to where it's actually intended to be cared for, and it's not undisturbed areas. Is that the question?
Well, I guess I'm wondering what, so if you, if you have some portion that is landscaped and some portion that is built upon, is there ever a third portion that is neither?
Okay, Jessica Kimlin, Development Services Manager. So the way the code works now, you can use permeable pavers. Permeable pavers don't count against your impervious maximum. So theoretically, you could build a building and you could, if the rest of your area on your lot was a parking lot, you could basically have almost no green but still be meeting your impervious maximum. Does that make sense? So what we wanted to do in the new code was include a landscape minimum so that you can use permeable pavers, that's great, but you're actually going to have to have actual open space on all these lots, and that's why we included it in that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Continuing with second round questions. Okay, see, no, none. We will now move on to final comment on Chapter 2 from council, or debate. Four minutes per member. Anyone like to begin? No one?
Someone wants to go first.
I will go first. I just, I would like to respond to the public that came tonight and spoke. I thought it was very eloquent. I think you described exactly really my view of the potential hazard of upzoning and density. I think that the comment about financialization and the investment opportunities available in especially towns, college towns, is, I think, very real, and it was very spot-on. That's not to say I'm not in, I'm against density, but I think that there are places for density, and Councilmember Sterbaum just described that we have areas where the density could occupy. And some of the references, I think, that were made for, to the struggle Mr. Dorfman talked about, that this is a reoccurring sort of theme, different iterations, it changes over time, but the upzoning is always sort of, comes back, and I assume that these debates have happened many, many times before. I think that the historical view of this is really important because as neighborhoods have evolved over time in Bloomington, since I've been here 35 years, I've seen the threats, I've seen neighborhoods stressed, at risk, that have rebooted, become owner-occupied, protected affordable housing, small homes within the core, and I think that that is, I mean, if anything else in this process I want to do is to do no harm. So to protect what exists that's working really deserves special reverence, and I'll conclude with that. I have more to say as we proceed on amendments. So I've jumped into the deep end of the pool. Who would like to join me? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Again, with respect to the public comment, I could not agree more that in going forward, people with differing points of views need to be mindful, the things that you say and the way you The things that you say and the way you say them can put people on the defensive and can make people feel offended. And we don't want that. We want to get to a good product. We want to get to a good policy that protects what we have, that we love, and that we need. And yet is mindful of the needs for growth in all the right places and for all the right reasons. I particularly liked Ms. Brethheim's comment about, as changes occur, if changes are going to occur, let's do it gently. Because gentrification, you know, if that is going to be a side effect of some of these changes that could possibly go through, that is not good for affordability. That is not good for the already diverse residents that live in these urban core neighborhoods. And so let's all be gentle. Let's be gentle in our language. Let's be gentle in our approach. Let's not do things so quickly that, as Councilmember Rallo has said, that we end up doing harm. That's one of my biggest fears. That's one of the things that keeps me up at night. Yes, we want what we need to address modern challenges, whether it is our need to be more mindful of our carbon footprint, as well as our need to provide housing for our workforce, the people that work at Cook and Catalent and IU and all the people who are desperately looking for housing and can't find it. But then there are these lower-income, moderate-income families that are already here, that are already, you know, making good lies for themselves in some of these older core neighborhoods. We must be mindful of that. And I don't care how trendy the research in other cities. We've got to take a look at this city. What works in Bloomington? And what's not going to fit in Bloomington? And I think Bloomington people know that very well. I've been here long enough to see that we have a community of very engaged, very invested, very intelligent residents who can see what's coming and who know what's been and can make good decisions here going forward. And so that is my hope for the remainder of this project. There's some very good things in this UDO, and there's some things that even though I was a member of the Plan Commission and I voted to pass this on to this council, I didn't agree with everything that's in it. And so I hope this is an opportunity for us to tweak it, get it right. Thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yeah, I wanted to also respond to some of the public comment this evening. First of all, when Mr. Alexander said we should just get rid of PUDs, that, in a way, that resonates with me, because it is, PUDs are, you know, a way to circumvent our regular zoning requirements. I think that there is a role for them. But what I'm going to be looking at is if we allow PUDs and they have some kind of affordable housing or sustainable development, a green building component, I really think that they should not be allowed to do a payment in lieu of including that component. So I do think we need to tighten up the PUDs and make sure that they provide a clear, significant public benefit. So all the discussions about density in core neighborhoods, I live in a core neighborhood, I guess I'm one of the Aimb's, because I have a homeless shelter across the street and a trailer park in my backyard. And certainly, my house was very affordable when it was purchased in the 90s. And it's a 900-square-foot house, so just, that's where I'm coming from. And yet, I do see the proposal that is currently in the draft to have duplexes and triplexes allowed as conditional use. I see that as a compromise, because initially, they were allowed by right, as well as fourplexes in core neighborhoods. And so we've taken the fourplexes away, those are only allowed in R4, which is not even zoned yet, and made the other two less dense forms, these are not big apartment buildings, made those conditional use. So I think that there has been a compromise. I wanted to respond to a few specific remarks. I do not think that it's anybody's purpose to force all non-IU-affiliated people to move away from downtown. I don't think that's anybody's desire. I think that one of the reasons we have created, or that the new draft has in it, the student housing district, is that we can say, okay, enough downtown student housing. Let's, we want to have a mixed population downtown, not just students. And I think that's a way to reclaim that, and that's why we put the brakes on some student or some residential complexes downtown two years ago. So Ms. Danfield said we cannot afford, we can't have affordable housing unless we subsidize it. I think in many cases, it does have to be subsidized, but not in all cases. I know of some apartment complexes in the district I represent that do not receive subsidies, but that are relatively affordable, and that's because they're older. That's because they're not the new shiny thing. So they are still, you know, in decent condition, but they're not the latest and greatest. So there are ways to get affordable housing. And I think a key to that is to have more housing, because I do believe that there is law, the law of supply and demand does have an impact on the housing market. The, let's see, there was one other thing. I do, I do want to second what Mr. Flaherty said, that, you know, I hope that we can all agree. I mean, we up here do this job for very little money, and we put our heart and soul into it. And I know that people who are out there who have spoken on all sides of the issue do have the best interest of the community in mind. So I hope that even if we disagree, we can respect that and know that if we characterize something in a certain way, it doesn't mean we're labeling the people in that, in a certain way, in a certain negative way. So I hope that we can keep that in mind as the weeks go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I too want to thank everyone for their public comment. A couple of things about what we're doing, and we'll hear tons and tons of comments and analysis and a bunch here in the next couple of weeks. 37 years ago, I lived on West 7th, right across from the West Side Center, I'm sorry, the Banneker Center. It used to be called the West Side Center, there was a reason. The makeup of the Near West Side is not the same as it was, in particularly racially. And I don't see where it had a lot to do with zoning at the time. It had to do with some other things. And I think we all kind of know what some of those things are. But it is not the same, okay? So we will change. I like this do-no-harm aspect. I hope I don't jump around here a little bit, there's a couple of things I do want to say. I just went south of town and got my car, an automobile service. Three people approached me, "Got to talk to you. I recognize you on TV. You, I want my city back." "What do you mean?" We won't get into that, all this, but "I want my city back." A lot of it has to do with no change. I like Mayberry. One person told me that. You know? There will be change. Our thing is, or my thing, and I think my colleagues, is to try to do the smart thing, to try to do the thing that is going to do no harm or as least amount of harm as possible. There are still, and I don't want to pick on any particular or use any particular neighborhood, but even in the Near West Side, if we did no zoning change at all, there are empty lots throughout that area that can be built. There aren't a whole lot. But there are, I live there, there are some there, trust me. So those are some of the areas that I think that through compromising, negotiating, considering, and reconsidering, I think there are some spaces that we could use to add some density along with all the other spaces that need to be built out as well. I don't think many of us have made decisions already. We've already heard a ton. We're going to hear more. At least I know I will. These are all interconnected, actually, too. We're talking about housing, climate change, public transportation, employment, multi-mobility. These aren't, we talk to them sometimes like they're all separate, but they're really interconnected. And we're going to have to kind of just figure out what's best for this town with the growth that we are getting. And we can say we're not growing in IU's population and their, you know, admissions. I worked at IU for 33 years, trust me. When I first came to school here, it was 28,000 kids. I was one of them. And some people would probably say, "You need to," well, that's another thing, 28,000 kids. Now we've got over 40,000. Do I think it'll get to 50? I don't think so. I don't know. But I do know that as long as they're part of this community, and I get some things about student housing, then there are certain things that we're going to have to do. Yes, we need to sit down and let me know if I'm out of time. Almost. I do know, and you need to sit down with the IU people. I talk with those folks regularly, officially and mostly unofficially. Separate entity. Now I'm out of time. Okay, I'll continue next week. I just want to thank everyone for the work they're doing. It is very, very helpful. Many of you I'll talk with individually over coffee in different places, and I really do appreciate that, and it is helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Volin.
That's this, okay, I'm starting over. There we go. No one is proposing student housing in the Near West Side or McDowell Gardens, yet lots of students are living in those neighborhoods right now. You don't know them, you don't hear them, because they're not actually partying. Duplexes and triplexes are not the same thing as giant student housing projects. No one's proposing a giant student complex to replace the hospital. The very formation of neighborhood associations helped prevent the giant complexes that invaded District 6 before there was zoning. Where FPU's been proposed in recent years? Century Village, the extreme east edge of town. Chandler's Glen, bordering I-69. The only one we actually approved was the one in North Walnut, that took a great deal of lifting to actually pass. How did student housing make it into Garden Hill, Terra Trace, brownstone terrace? Or Poolside Apartments, or those smaller three-story, 18-unit crappy flat-top buildings that dot West Elm Heights? Those ships sailed decades ago. That happened before we had zoning, let alone the GPP, or a UDO, or a comprehensive plan. Our current ordinances are already preventing this apocalyptic vision promoted by so many tonight. A vision rooted in the lawless time before 1975, when 60% of Bloomington's downtown was razed for parking lots. And East Kirkwood was still transitioning to a commercial street from what used to be a residential street in the early part of the century. The consultant said that the new student housing type, we can, it encourages student housing where we want it. But that's the thing, that's not how non-students read it. Non-students don't want student housing anywhere. They will read it as student housing should go over there and there only, anywhere but near us. Smallwood is a really good example. It was approved and built before the first UDO. There are student developments all over town, or we wouldn't be seeing apartment shuttles. Students are all over town, and they should stay all over town, not isolated in student housing districts. What it underscores is the need for PUD reform, which I absolutely support, but a student housing district just exacerbates the student, non-student divide. Mr. Dorfman said something interesting, I think he's wrong about why companies are not signing on in the Trades District. It's not because there's not enough housing there, it's because, and very explicitly so, and it's been said to my face, they want to see parking. They want to see parking built before they're willing to build buildings there. Councilmember Rallo argued that the four-story garage would reduce sprawl in the periphery of our city if we rebuilt it and made it larger. Maybe if there was more dense housing throughout the community, we wouldn't be seeing the demand for parking from people who are traveling increasingly far to be where the core neighborhoods already get to be, close to the center of town. I think there is a compromise to be had between the location haves and the location have-nots. We're only talking about people who want to either be close, or they want to be able to get there. But the problem is, it requires things beyond the scope of the UDO. We need to talk about transportation, parking, and transit, which is hard to codify in a zoning ordinance. But I would urge everyone to maybe start seeing students as, you know, people. And that they actually, the majority of them don't make noise. And no one's proposing building a complex that, like the ones that dot the district that I represent in your neighborhood. Let's ratchet down this rhetoric. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterbeum.
I'm thinking back before I was on council, in the Fernandes days. I got on council somewhat in the Fernandes days, but we're on the Historic Commission. And in those days, developers wanted to tear down buildings downtown and build. And we sat together to make a preservation plan. And what we said was, here's what's valuable, keep that. And we made a map of parking lots, we made a map of one-story buildings. We said, here's where to build stuff, keep the good stuff, build where the stuff isn't. And I was shocked that the mapping comes later, and nobody walked out there and looked at the ground out there on the ground. I mean, the people who are talking about upzoning don't know what it means to the actual ground, to the actual neighborhoods. I've watched, and many who have lived in this community a long time, saw why we had zoning, why it came in. University town, it was consuming Elm Heights. It was like the giant nothing, it was eating away Bloomington. And single-family zoning stopped that. And single-family zoning encouraged ownership. And ownership is the affordable way to live in this Bloomington town. And if this turns everything into rental, which is what it does when it upzones, the investor is going to bid against the guy who wants to turn these things into rental. He can put nine people on your property, and you're now bidding against that to be a homeowner. You know, so I go back to, I read a book, a very recently published book about neighborhoods. And this woman was so nostalgic about true neighborhoods, where people were politically involved, where they knew each other, where they could walk to the downtown. And she was mourning because there were so few of these neighborhoods in this country. They'd been destroyed by one thing or another. And I just thought, we have those neighborhoods. We live in those neighborhoods. We fought to build those neighborhoods, and they are precious. And when I draw this next map, I circle those neighborhoods. Those are the assets of the city. Those are single-family houses that we are short of. We're like 66% rental in this town. And what people want, in all these surveys, I want a little house and a little bitty yard. They just do. And they want that, and if we burn that up, that greatest asset of our city, they're going to go to Elletsville, they're going to go wherever they have to. But we've lost it, because that's going backwards into rental world. So, you know, it's not news that people who live more densely use less energy. You know, New York City, we get that. Urbanists have known that for years and years and years. They're per capita better. So we have all this area to build the missing middle, build and enhance, and build the density that we need. There's plenty of area to build it. And it will complement this, these great neighborhoods. It will complement what is great about the city, and it'll build out that, those stupid car lots, and it'll build out those one-story strip malls, and it'll, it'll fill in the way it should. And we can have three-story mixed-use all along South Walnut. You know, we can have apartments close to town, all those, like, what an underused area, that gas company, one-story, two-part, you know, five trucks parking there. There's so much to build out. If we do it consciously, if we map correctly, if we, we'll have a better Bloomington. But it's foolish to try to do it one blanket, overzone, that solves everything, solves climate. And there's so many unintended consequences that I know in my gut, from watching this town for my entire life. We need to do this right, and we can, and we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Last chance? All right. Do we have a rebuttal? Do you have?
Do you have time remaining?
I have 15 seconds.
You have 15 seconds? All right, let's see it.
I'll just say really quickly, we're going to need to make a choice. We cannot complain about rentals and then say, well, every student brings a car. If we're going to build the missing middle, elsewhere besides core neighborhoods, it's going to be on parking lots. So pick one. Either no duplexes in your neighborhood, or there's not going to be as much parking anymore. That's going to be a choice we have to make. Think about it.
Strong man, false choice.
All right, let's let it, let it.
You did. You used 20 seconds.
Very good, very good. Efficient use of time. Okay, thank you all for coming. Now we'll move on to any other matters or actions related to the proposal ready to be raised at this meeting. What does that mean?
It's casual.
Oh, it is?
Tonight.
You don't know what it, so it's, does anyone have anything that would shoehorn into that topic? Okay, seeing none? Do we need a motion to recess?
Yes, and you do want to remind folks when the next meeting is.
Yes. The next meeting is Tuesday, October 22nd, next Tuesday, and that is exclusively at 6:00 PM here, and that is exclusively Chapter Three, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So with that, we'll need a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of recessing until October 22nd? Say aye.
All.
Any opposed? We're recessed.[1729.51]